This work session meeting of the Kingman Common Council to order. We do not need a roll call, but could we stand please and do the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by a consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on an agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. Today, we have one agenda item, and that is the fiscal 2019-2020 budget work session. And this will be a two-part meeting over May 9th and May 10th, 2019, for council to receive presentations from staff regarding the City of Kingman fiscal year 2019-2020 operating and capital budget. And with that, I will turn it over to city manager Foggan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the council for attending this morning meeting. Appreciate your attendance. Want to thank my team. Before we get started, I would be remiss if I did not thank Tina Moline and her team, specifically Melissa, for their efforts as you work through, as we go through this budget. Of course, all the credit needs to go to the team, to Tina and her team, as well as the leadership team for helping put this budget document together. I think that you will be pleasantly surprised by the budget document. The revisions, the re-hall of the budget document is amazing. It is something I'll talk about a little bit more, but just want to make sure that we got that out on the table, Ms. Tina. And for this, for this work session, basically, I want to just let you know that as, as we cover the information, if you have questions, of course, we're looking for dialogue. If there's something that's confusing or misunderstood, we want to clear that up. If you have a question, it's probably others have that question as well, so please feel free to ask those questions. And, and let's make sure that we don't leave anything unanswered. The other piece that I just want to let you know is that the process for presenting this is going to be, I don't know how it's been done in the past, but what's going to happen is basically, I am going to walk you through the budget overview. Tina's going to help me with some of the summary stuff, and then I'm going to walk you through each of the operating budgets. And then, if there's specific questions at the end of those, that conversation, we've got my, my leadership team here who will be able to answer questions. Obviously, we want to make sure that you know what services are being delivered. The one thing that you will, will note is that we are, we are going to have an explanation of increases and decreases within the budgets for these departments, which I think is very helpful to help you understand where we're taking each of these services. So with that, we will start through the budget presentation. So, Ms. Tina? All right. I prepared for you a little bit of, just to get the juices flowing on budgeting, and kind of want to just leave those three quotes for you. I, I love the first one. I like George W., but he, he's, and he had some great quotes, but it's clearly a budget. It's got lots of numbers on it. And so, I, I think that we, we clearly have a budget here. There is a lot of numbers and a lot of effort that have gone into putting those numbers together. I guess I should say, the, one of the most important things for this budget is that it is balanced. So what we're presenting to you is balanced. And then I thought that the bottom one was actually really great, too. If taxpayer money was limitless, we wouldn't have to do this. As we know, that it is far from limitless. So I think we have a, a budget for you that clearly takes in to account the services that we've been providing along with the priorities of the council, so. Go to the next one. So, objectives for today. We want to identify the budget highlights. We want to review the city council and citizen priorities. We want to provide a highlight of the 2020 budget recommendations for each operating division. We want, going to have the five-year capital plan for you, and also a highlight of our 2020 capital projects. So just in, in review, if you haven't been keeping score, we have been in the budget process for quite some time, and it, as usual, it usually takes about six months to build the next fiscal year's budget, and we're holding pretty true to that. Started back in October, and we will, of course, finalize the budget with your approval on the 18th of June. So, oh, the budge, the budge document. The, so the budget document, what is it? Of course, we want it to be that policy document. We also, of course, expect it to be a financial plan, an operations tool, and an outreach tool. And when we say outreach, we're really, that is the part where we, we hope that it's a great communication tool that, that you folks can use, but even more importantly, that the community can pick this document up and actually be able to read it. You don't have to have your CPA, you don't have to be an accountant or a financial guru to read our budget document and understand our budget. And that's, that's the point of this document. And I, again, I want to thank Tina and Melissa for their efforts to make this a great communications document. On the heels of this, of this document, we're also planning on having a citizen budget document that'll be a much more reduced, very specific, lots of pictures, great graphs, that citizens will be able to understand and follow the budget even that much more. So if you don't want to get into the 200-page document here, there'll be a 20-page or so document that will help you, that will boil this all down for, for the citizens. So that's, that's the purpose, and it's what we're doing with this, with this document. So, how did we get here? Of course, as you, as you folks remember, we actually participated in a couple of council retreats in the last year that have helped put this information, helped us put this information together. We did our first citizen survey, which we took community input on. Of course, we've made every attempt to align our CIP projects with the council priorities. We, you recall, in the first of the year, we, we provided for you a five-year forecast, both on expenditures and revenues, that we felt was very important, as well as fund balances. The department operating budget reviews and determine the supplemental requests that are being asked for, and of course, as I have said, we're presenting a balanced budget that, that the council can work from. Okay. Just as a reminder, you're, you're fine, Travis. Council and citizen priorities, the, the main ones, of course, that people, that we, we are looking at, and what the people living in the community, as you as elected officials have identified, so community livability, always that one, of course, boils to the top. It encompasses a whole bunch of aspects of what we do. Economic development, and then infrastructure improvements. And specifically to the council, from above and beyond what the community can identify, they, they don't normally pick out some of the operational things. One of the operational, specific operational things, high, a high-level operational thing that the council has indicated is taking care of the employees or the employee compensation. So that's what you will see. I think you will see a, a strong investment in our employees, both in wages and, and the benefit side, and which we will be talking about as well. All right. One of the things, I know we've covered this in the past, but we want to, I just wanted to make sure that we pointed this out, is that the citizens are paying attention to capital. They, they may not refer to it as capital projects, but we know them as capital projects. So in the citizen survey, we asked them to provide what they thought, thought were, were essential things that needed to be worked, that we needed to be working on. And of course, pavement preservation was at the top of that list. The widening of Stockton Hill Road, of course, we're, we're just paving the two, the four lanes plus the turn lane that we have now, but there is, of course, interest in the community for having Stockton be wider. Eastern Street, we've talked about Eastern a number of times. That's a $10 million project with, which you will see some funding for in the five-year capital plan when we talk about it. The Rancho Santa Fe slash Kingman Crossing Boulevard interchanges, also affectionately known as the I-11 corridor project. People are paying attention to there and wanting to make sure that, that, that we're working on that. Of course, building a new fire station on the east, in the East Bench area. And tied with that was, was the downtown. So people, you know, 54% rated, the downtown is something that we needed to be considering putting money towards. And then not far behind that, of course, you get parks. And then, interestingly enough, there are folks that are interested in seeing a multipurpose community center. We've talked about that at our last kind of revenue slash, what do we want to call that meeting? Kind of paying for assets meeting, where we talked about how that would be done. And then replacing lighting, of course, if you don't use centennial ball fields, that's might not be as high, high on your priority list. So those are, those are the things that, or that's how people rated those specific projects that, that we, we know about, where, where needed. So just wanted to share that with you. You're going to see some of the funding suggestions on how we're, we're addressing those as we get to the capital projects. All right. And then another piece to the citizen survey is, we asked them to please rate how important it is, or if at all, for the following strategic planning areas. Of course, education, which of course, we don't control, we're kind of a cheerleader for, but the, the ones that we do control, water, sustainability, economic development, being very rated very, very high, and right on the heels of that, safety and infrastructure improvements. I would even say that at 63% with recreation and cultural opportunities are, are things that, that our, our citizens really have an eye towards, that they want, then this, of course, goes to the livability of our community. The, and I'll say the overall livability, the arts and the ability to, to be cultured or enjoy culture in our, in our communities is very important to our citizens. All right. We doing okay so far? Okay. Budget highlights. Let's, we're going to start, of course, when you, when you build the budget, you, you have to start with revenue. You need to know what revenues are available and what they, what they're going to look like. And so for this first section, I'm going to just turn the, the revenue discussion over to Tina to have her kind of walk through her assumptions as she, she did the revenue and cover, cover what, what you're going to see there.
Great. So our total revenues, meaning every single sort of revenue that we have in the recommended budget, is going to be $97.9 million, which is almost an 8% increase over last year's budget. When we, and when we get into the, later, later in this presentation, we'll actually get into the, each of the funds and talk a little bit about what some of those revenue assumptions are, so I won't get into the weeds on those yet. But charges for services are a large piece of our total revenues, which of course, are mostly our enterprise funds, and then some of our general fund charges as well, but primarily those, which you'll see just a slight increase, and that's normal for our enterprise funds. They are mostly slight increases. We have a large increase in our contributions, and that really is for our capital, and that is mostly for the KRMC contribution that we have budgeted this fiscal year. Scrolling down, we have some small dollar amounts, fines and forfeitures, franchise fees as far as overall for the budget. Intergovernmental is up slightly, and that's strictly, or mostly strictly, let's say, primarily, it has to do with our grant revenues. And so with bringing on the airport, we're expecting some pretty big projects to be funded with grants, hoping anyhow. And so that's a large increase, the reason for that increase there. As we scroll down and look at our local sales tax, of course, it's down. Last year, we had that additional 1% included, so overall, we're showing a decline, but I am including a pretty good increase from fiscal year 19 to 20 if we take out that 1%. We want to get closer to our, as far as our actuals, we want our actuals to be closer to what our budgets are. We're pretty conservative, and we were a little less conservative this fiscal year, just based on what we're expecting to collect. So we did include an increase in that overall. The other, the, that large other number are, are internal service revenues, which are really just the transfers in between funds going from our, our operating divisions into those building maintenance, fleet services, information technology funds. And then lastly, we've got our state shared revenues, and we are expecting an increase in our HERF funding, not from anything other than just general growth. We're not including anything that the governor's budget includes at this time, and also in the urban revenue sharing, so the income tax also, we're going to expect a pretty good increase. And then, of course, our development investment fees, which is strictly our wastewater fees, and those are dedicated solely to our debt service payment there. And so we have a total of $97.9 million with almost an 8% increase. So total appropriations, meaning what we can spend next year, is at $137 million. That's an increase of 13% over fiscal year 19. And you'll see the breakout here. Personnel has increased, and that's due, of course, to the recommended compensation adjustments. Our supplies and services have increased. Now, a portion of those supplies and services are related to capital, because some of our capital items are consulting services and whatnot, so some of those are included in there. You'll see our internal services have increased slightly. Debt service is down, and then capital, of course, you'll see, has increased. And most of that is coming from our enterprise funds, so water, wastewater, and airport. And then our contingency, we're decreasing some of the contingency line items. And then our operating budgets have, are increasing almost 9% over fiscal year 19, but almost half of that, or just over half of that, is due to the $3.1 million one-time PSPRs payment that we're recommending for this next fiscal year.
All right. Any questions on revenue? The, I think it's important to, to note that we are watching some of the things that are happening at the state, but until, until the state passes their budget and we know kind of where the licensing fee ends up, and there's, there's a bunch of stuff still up in the air that, of course, we're, we're not going to be able to account for or have money in the budget until the dust settles down in Phoenix on, on some of this stuff. So just want to make sure that we, you know, we are paying attention to it. We were kind of hoping that some of this information would be finalized, but, and we're being told it's probably not until the May, May 20th or just past May 20th where some of this stuff will be finalized. As far as continuing with the budget highlights, we are, we are proposing that we're going to contribute to our retirement for our public safety folks. As you recall from our last work session, the, there is a benefit. The more we pay upfront, the, the greater the savings overall. Just reminder that we have about, we, well, we have till 2036 to pay down just over $30 million worth of, of, of debt that we have in the retirement system. And so the 3.1 will, will help speed that up a little bit. And so I appreciate Tina actually budgeting that and trying to help move us forward in taking on that, that pretty big debt. Of course, you remember, we presented at the last meeting, we talked about our having a fund balance be at 40% instead of the maximum 50%, and then using anything over 40% to pay down that, that liability. And then as far as capital improvements, again, I've, I think I mentioned this already, but when we were building the capital, our capital improvement budget, the one thing that we wanted to make sure we were doing is we, we, we were asking these questions about community livability, about the economic development and improve, just overall, is it going to improving our infrastructure? And so I think you will see that in the projects that we're rolling forward. I also want to just remind you that we, we do have a new fund this year, and that will be the stormwater fund, something as we move forward, we'll, we'll need to tack, we have to tackle. Some of the stormwater issues that are prevalent throughout the community, I wish I could say that it was just one or two sections of the city, but it is across the city. And so we will be talking about that as well.
Ron, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
From the previous slide.
Yep.
Regarding the utilizing the fund balance to exceed 40, is, does that require a policy change on us? I mean, doing that, it'll have that obligation paid by 2036?
Six.
And I don't know if any of the council will be here in 2036, and I don't know if any of the staff will be here in 2036.
Yeah, we're going to.
So to protect, to protect that strategy, do we need to do a policy change?
You know, it's really going to boil down to the, each year when we go through the budget process, we're really not, the policy itself is, is not changing. The policy, if you remember right, is that we, we want to have a fund balance that is at least 25% with a maximum of 50%. And so all that we're doing is we're just asking the council, you know, moving forward, if, instead of always bumping up against 50%, if we can just, if we can go to 40% and I, and then earmark money above 40% of the fund balance to go to paying PR, or paying the public safety retirement system. And so, you know, whatever, whatever that, that, that is, is what we, is what we'll dedicate to it. It's really not, I wouldn't say that it's a, it's anything other than our, our attempt to help pay it down. And if there's, you know, if next year, there's a different way to put, that you want to do it, and you want to maintain fund balances back up to 50%, then, then we can do it. It's not, I don't, I don't, I don't feel like it's a necessary policy to change to be really super specific to that. It's just our idea to help pay it down over time.
So what you're, what you're saying is whoever's city manager, whoever's on council between now and 2036, it'll be a yearly thing that will have to continue every year?
Yeah, because we're going to, like, as you recall from our presentation, you know, paying down 30 million in 15 years or so is, is going to take pretty dramatic work. And this little piece that we're proposing just, just kind of chips away at it, but certainly doesn't get to the heart of it.
And if I may, we will be adopting a pension policy, and that will address how the council plans to, to fund that unfunded liability, and a piece of that will be utilizing the fund balance.
That's kind of what I was looking for. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. That'll be at the next council meeting.
All right. Of course, one of the highlights of the budget process, and one of the, I don't know if it's exciting or not, but one of the things that I know departments look forward to is what are we going to do with personnel? And so what we wanted to do is just show you what was requested and what was actually funded for, for full-time positions. So for, for this year, in the attorney's office, we have a deputy attorney, deputy city attorney that was requested and funded. Economic development, we had, we've added economic development manager for commercial and downtown as a full-time position. In finance, we've added an assistant finance services director. In IT, we've added an IT coordinator. Sanitation, we've added an operator. Water, or for engineering, I should say, we added a plan examiner, a plans examiner. In the police department, we eliminated police officer positions, and that, of course, was part of our actions this year, but of course, it affects next year. Parks, we eliminated a park ranger that is in the budget. We also had requests from fire to do four firefighters that are not in the budget. Tourism requested a customer service rep that is not in the budget, and the dispatch center asked for a call taker that is not in the budget. One thing that I, I do want to roll back up to is tourism, is that what I've asked Gary and his team to do is look at, instead of hiring full-time employees, doing more work with part-time folks and trying to get more coverage for the hours. One full-time position really ultimately doesn't help us keep the doors open longer. When you have someone who calls in sick, or they go on vacation, you know, we end up really short-staffed. And so you'll see later in the tourism discussion, presentation, you'll see discussion about additional part-time people instead of full-time. So those are the positions we have for you. So it's a net position request of 8.25. Total net positions recommended works out to, is that 2.25?
2.2.
Yeah, so.
But that doesn't include the public works reorganization.
Right, right. Yep. So, yes.
Last night, I was at a meeting, there was a lot of discussion.
Mayor, do you want to hit your microphone?
I was at this meeting, and there was a lot of discussion last night about the need for upkeep of grounds and, and streets and right-ofways. Does any, was that discussed during this budget? Because we, Mr. Tapia and all of us said it's a manpower issue, getting out and keeping everything clean. It was a whole focused discussion on clean city and whatnot, and I just wonder, especially seeing elimination of parks, of a parks position, and no, no increase for, for that type of activity that was discussed during the.
Yeah, well, yes. As we, as we look at the services, when we talk about keeping the community clean, the parks, the ranger is someone who helps us manage pavilion rentals, park rentals, that, so that position doesn't go as much to, to cleaning. But yeah, that's the balancing act that we're, we're involved with, is, you know, with keeping streets clean, the street sweepers running, all of that kind of stuff. Obviously, we want to see the citizens caring for their part of the city.
That was discussed, too.
And, yeah. And, you know, with, with, with us trying to keep the, the community clean, I know Jack and his team, Mike and his team, do, do above and beyond work with the people that they have and still try to get the other work done. The, the problem that we run into is, and it, it's no different for sanitation than it is for parks and, and streets, are that we're just limited on funding, and trying to put that funding towards street maintenance, keeping parks looking beautiful, and then splitting people off to, to take care of the cleanliness of the city is pretty difficult. You know, we, we are, I will say that we, I think we're utilizing the prisoner program to its, to the best possible use we can, getting as much time out of the prison inmate program that we can.
That was asked last night.
So, yeah. Yeah, it, and that's a, we're, we, we went without it for a month and a half, two months, and it really started to show. It's back in full swing now. I know that the, that all the departments that were utilizing them, which are the three that we're talking about actually, sanitation, streets, and, and parks in particular, without those, the cost, the cost to this community, if we had to hire part-time and additional full-time people, would be full-time people, would be somewhere in the range of four hundred to six hundred thousand dollars to replace to replace that that I won't, it's not free labor, we pay for it, but very reduced cost labor. So um yeah, it's it's matter of fact, it's not just in the budget conversations, it's in our daily conversations about how can we, how can we beautify with what we've got? You know, I know you've heard Gary talk about the airport and the industrial park going from what looked like nobody had ever pulled a weed to what it does now. That's that's really a credit to Gary's team, to Rob's team, to Mike's team. And so we're doing as much as we can and still getting the programs done. So that's a long answer to a short question. I apologize, but.
Well, no, I appreciate it, and especially uh the information on how we're utilizing the the labor, the prison labor, because uh we'll know to say that in the future. We said we are, but we, I didn't have that specific.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Key, that's they're they're definitely the program that we're utilizing to save money and to try to clean up, so.
I mean, you have a sample question. Although you see a three-quarter.
Yeah, yep. All right. On the public works side, one of the things that Rob has been trying to to do is he has been trying to develop a a leadership team in which is that they can be more efficient and effective. And so I just wanted to point out to you, in in effort to to do that, he is going through a reorganization. This reorganization will probably take us, I don't know, Rob, what do you think, couple of years to get it completely done? We've had, we've had an opportu- I'll say an opportunity, it's not something that we we actually look forward to, but we we have had a number of people retire, and that's given us the opportunity to kind of reevaluate what people were doing, what, you know, at the top of the orga- you know, are we top-heavy? Are we, you know, can we be leaner and and have a broader base in our leadership? Uh and I think Rob has done a good job of looking at that. So the results of that are that we're going to see this year, uh building maintenance is going to add a construction maintenance supervisor. Fleet Services is going to reclassify the superintendent to a construction maintenance supervisor. Um they're going to have uh in the public works administration, they're going to add a project manager and reclass admin assistant. I think that will make them stronger as they do reports and grant-type stuff and they as they work towards performance measurements. Uh in street operations, we're going to reclassify the street superintendent to uh public works um to a assistant public works director and add a construction uh maintenance supervisor and electrician. In waste wastewater, we're going to reclassify the superintendent to assistant public works director, add a wastewater treatment, uh operating supervisor and collections crew leader. And then finally, um the reclassification of the superintendent to a crew leader instead of having um a, you know, superintendent. So the 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 step up would will be that Rob will have two um assistant public works directors and then will work, they will, they will be assigned the different divisions of the public works. So that is, that's what we are doing in the public works side of things. All right. One of the things that we have spent many, many hours on is employee compensation, and I'm pretty excited to to share this with you. As we have um in this budget, a two percent salary increase for all the full-time employees. Uh we have, as part of the compensation study, we've removed the step and grade system that we could never afford or have never afforded afforded over at least the last fifteen to twenty years. Um and we, in our last meeting, we described how that was going to work, is that we we now have a minimum, maximum, and a midpoint in which to bring people in. We can also do raises um that are less than four or five percent, because that's the step system was requiring us to to do these giant raises and could never afford them. So now we'll be able to do a one percent, a one and a half percent, a two percent like we're proposing this year, instead of nobody getting raised because we couldn't afford to do it, you know, at four or five percent. Um so we've done that. We're going to implement a separate pay plan for the police and fire personnel uh to make sure that we don't fall behind as we have in the past. And um we shifted police and fire sworn personnel salaries to align with the new play, new pay plan, AKA no no more step and grade system. And then we've adjusted um police and fire personnel with, as they've been affected by the compression issue. And as I pointed out in our last meeting, one of the things, of course, that that we've looked at is compression both horizontally, I mean vertically and horizontally. And I think we've been able to address both there. Just to be clear, uh much like the correction to the public works organization, this is a multi-year uh effort. Uh we're not saying we got it a hundred percent fixed in this year, um but we made good steps, and over the next couple of years, we'll continue to work and make sure that we don't fall prey to that compression uh issue that that we've been, that we've we've been saddled with for the last umpteen number of years. So that's kind of the the employee compensation thing. Again, I want to thank Jackie and Krista for their efforts. Uh Tina uh was part of those um conversations, and I think that we came to um to a place where I think it was a win-win for everybody, and I think we now have a compensation um policy or program that will allow us to do raises and cost of living adjustments on a yearly basis, instead of doing it one every ten years or 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 what have you. So so um I would just want to thank the team for their efforts on that. And, yes, ma'am.
Um I know this is hard to answer, but what do you foresee happening next year? Do you see across the board, cost of living raises happening for all of staff, or do you see department by department?
So the.
The directors handling raises based on performance?
So we will continue to use our compensation plan to make sure that we stay market competitive. Uh so what I, what next year, we'll probably tackle a little bit more of the co- the compression issue. And then I'm I'm guessing if uh our revenue projections continue to match what we think they're going to be, uh what you would see is a cost of living adjustment to the entire pay scale, um so that we don't fall behind there. Because it's it's one thing, it's one thing to give raises, it's another, when you get your people topped out, and then they, you, every year that goes by, if you don't do a cost of living adjustment, those people start falling behind, and that and then you you actually start compression problems more towards the top. We've been more towards the bottom, but it, so that, I think that's kind of what you'll end up seeing is one year raises, one year cost of living adjustments, and so on and so forth like that.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Any other questions compensation-wise? Okay. All right. Uh employee benefits, one of the things that as we worked with, uh we had a great employee um compensation employee committee that came together and the HR team worked with. Um and one of the things that was brought up by, or a couple of things that were brought up by by some of the committee members were, hey, if if we can't do all of the fixes right now, is would the, would you be willing to look at some of the things that we think we're behind on? And I'm like, you know what, that that's actually a great idea. Why don't, why don't we look and make sure that our total comp, when we talk about total compensation, are we being competitive total compensation? Not just I make twenty-two dollars an hour and somebody else in my same position makes twenty-four dollars an hour. Let's, you know, how does our total comp compensation look? And so as we got to looking at this, one of the things that that I knew was kind of an industry standard was recognizing longevity within the within the organization. Um in our current cap for vacation is two hundred hours. So you just, you you get a vacation accrual on your your paycheck, every time you get a paycheck, and once you get to two hundred hours, didn't mean it matter if you'd been in the organization five years or twenty-five years, your your cap was was two hundred hours of vacation. And so knowing, know, and and that was two forty for fire, they're they're a little bit different system, so. And knowing that in a lot, in most other organizations, uh the idea is the longer you're in the, the longer that you're with that organization, the more vacation that you can accrue. And so um one of the, one of the things that we're, that we've done is we basically changed the cap. So the longer you're in the organization, the more vacation time you can accrue. Um and so you can see that there's a step system, the employees that are currently in the system that have accrued, that are here between, you know, I think what you hit, after four years?
Five.
But how long does it take an employee to get to to two hundred hours? Do you remember, Jackie? Couple of years? Right. So those, so those employees that are in the system right now will be grandfathered in at the two hundred hours. Um but stepping forward, as you as you move between these ranges, your uh vacation time accrual will go up. Um we won't penalize any of those employees that are currently in the system by by moving them back or anything like that. But just, this is one of those things that we we felt like it will have value to the employee, and we, of course, we're trying to get folks, when we hire them, we're trying to get them to to their retirement. That's the goal. We don't want to train them, spend money on them, and then have them out, go out. And so this is one of the ways that we thought would be a good way to recognize longevity and add value to what um the employees are getting. As far as the benef- other benefits, so, yes.
How many hours are accrued for pay period?
Uh depends on how long you've been in the organization.
That that is.
So, yeah, as the longer you go, the more, the more vacation time that you get. That's why it it makes sense to then expand the the amount that you can accrue, so you're not.
What is the entry level start?
Currently, four point six nine or six?
For pay period? Thank you.
Does that encourage people to not take vacation, though? I mean, don't, does that system kind of encourage you to not take any kind of vacation time? Because there's a lot of studies that show that.
It actually, yeah, they do. And we we, as as a leadership team, we we encourage people to take time off to refresh. It's there not to hoard, but um what it does is, so that if it's, the cap is at two hundred, what you end up with is you have your twenty-year employees that are, that feel like they're, because it's a use it or lose it system, right? Um so what you end up with is you have your longer-standing employees taking off large chunks of time, and so allowing them to accrue some more, they don't, they don't have to try to take off as much time as as they as they would need to if it stayed capped at two hundred. Because the accrual, if it's at four point six for entry level, you know, every five years, that goes up some. So you've got your fifteen, your or your sixteen-plus-year employees that when they're, when you're capping them at two hundred, and they're basically, you're trying to get them to day, take three weeks of vacation, um or they're going to lose it. So that's just, like I said, it's an opportunity to recognize that you are getting some more, and the accrual, a lot, that larger accrual just allows them to not have to feel like they have to take so much, so much time off. Of course, they're, you're going to have to take time off or you're going to lose it. And I, my expectation for the leadership team is, if they're seeing employees that aren't taking time off, that they need to be sitting down and counseling with those employees to make sure that they are, because you get burnout and um and that's certainly uns- creates unsafe workplaces, so.
Okay.
Yep. All right. The next of, the next thing that we looked at is we looked at holidays, we looked at holiday pay and the hours that um we were offering versus what kind of is the best practice or the general practice across the state. We were at um ten and a half vacation days where most of our municipalities that we looked at were at twelve. And so we thought this was a great place where we can get a lot of value, not cost us a lot. Um and so what we're looking at is we're we, we're looking at replacing the half-day, we had a floater holiday that employees could either take a half-day at Christmas Eve or a half-day on New Year's uh Eve. And so what we're proposing in the, in this change is that we would just um give uh Christmas Eve, make Christmas Eve a day off and just be open and regular for New Year's, New Year's Eve. And um there, the amount of people that walk through our door on Christmas Eve, I I would be surprised if we even had a handful of people do that. They're just, that's just not on their priority list for Christmas Eve. So um so we would be closed Christmas Eve, and then we would add a birthday holiday that would, the employee would be required to take within the the month of of their birthday. So um those, those, that's the one and a half um holidays, uh hours, one and a half days uh that we're proposing. As far as insurance goes, um we, just as a reminder, we offer two insurance um programs, ones that, what I call a traditional, um where you have doctor visits at a certain rate, prescriptions at a certain rate, and then we offer a high deductible plan. The health insurance premiums did increase this year uh to seven, seven percent. Um the employees are covering that increase this year. Um we're offering dental vision, life insurance premiums, uh those did not change, it was just the health. And we've really enhanced the high deductible plan. That plan is cheaper for us as a city organization, so we are trying to get employees to move from that traditional health plan to the high deductible plan. And so those those um high deductible plan benefits were were increased so that we could encourage more people to get on to that, to that um, that that insurance plan. I'm sorry, they're remodeling downstairs, so you you may hear some pounding, so. Questions about that? Yes, counselor? Vice Vice Mayor, I apologize.
What's the current um premium split between the employees and the city? Premium cost?
So depending on what plan that they're on. Um so if they're on an EPO plan, the price list, the pay's like fifty-four and a half, five and a half, family, the employee pays sixteen and a half. On the high deductible health plan, four percent. Six percent employer, and then the.
So on the new statement that they're going to be getting, is that going to be reflected? Because that's pretty good.
For their total reward.
Yeah, well, the total compensation, I mean, to show that that the majority of the premium is paid by your employer.
And and that is a plus side.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we we rate, speaking of total compensation, that that part of the breakdown, as you break out um total compensation, that that portion puts us higher than a lot of other organizations.
Well, coming from somebody that pays a hundred percent of his family's premium, it's a big benefit.
Yeah, to, you know, just having, having paid that for my family, uh a portion of last year, yeah, it's it's.
Not a chump change.
No, it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money, and it is a great benefit. And and I'm, I I'm honestly happy to report that our our employees understand that, and um we, but we are making sure that we are pointing total compensation out. It's not, it really, of course, as we all know, it doesn't just boil down to uh you make eighteen dollars an hour and you want to make twenty-two dollars an hour. I mean, there is a lot more to it. So when we, when we talk about these things with the employees, with the employee benefits committee, um you know, this, this is the kind of stuff we talk about, is is total comp. You know, we are enjoying really good benefits, and like I said, we we are trying to get employees to make, to become good. And like I said, we, we are trying to get employees to make, to become good, uh, shoppers of medical um, by, by kind of pushing them to a high deductible plan where you can make, you can make better decisions for the use of your high deductible funds, so.
Did I also hear that you're gonna be front-loading those? It, those HSAs?
So, so to make the HSA more attractive, what we, what we've done in the past is we have, um, we have matched, um, employees' dollar amounts month or paycheck to paycheck, right? And, and to encourage employees to, to jump on board, we're gonna pay half of that upfront and then halfway through the year, pay the rest of that. So again, you know, it, it's, it's a, it's a new, different mindset for anybody that has not been on a high deductible plan. When you go to the pharmacy and the pharmacy tells you that your prescription that you're picking up's a hundred and sixty-nine dollars, that's, that's a real system shock. But understanding that, um, that's, you're just kind of paying your deductible upfront. But we do have that matching program that will now be front-loaded half um, so that the, the impact isn't quite as breathtaking as it would normally be.
I really like that. It's a good benefit.
Yeah, thank you. It is a great benefit. I, I appreciate, um, Tina and HR working that in, so. So that's what we have for benefits, um, the retirement rates. Ms. Tina, you want to talk about retirement?
Sure. We've talked a lot about the retirement rates. So just including a slide in here, giving you a little bit of history on what those PSPR rates are. I think, I think we've talked that one to death. But ASRS rates are also increasing this year by point three one percent. And that's the employer and the employee both will, um, absorb that increase. So unless you have specific questions.
Well, yeah, if you have, uh, specific questions, just, I know we have talked this to death. I think it is worth pointing out that both are, you know, both rates for our public safety folks are, are up pretty, pretty dramatically as well. You know, an additional four percent normally, excuse me, wouldn't sound like a lot. Um, but when you go from forty-four to forty-eight, that, that, those are big numbers. And, you know, with the fire is, you know, at six percent, that's even, that's, that's a big whammy, so.
That's a few hundred thousand dollars just in the PSPRS increases.
Yep.
That's due to the way that, that those systems are, the formula for those, age is included and things like that, right?
Yeah. Yep. And really what they thought they were gonna earn versus what they really earned. All right. Um, another benefit thing that we want, we need to talk to you folks about is that, uh, we did a little study of our, our other cities in the county and we're behind on, um, with our elected officials. And so, um, it's, it is, I would say it's, it was pretty big difference actually. And so what, uh, in this budget, what we have in this budget is an increase, uh, that aligns with the neighbors. The, the mayor would, would, uh, this would not put us at the top, by the way. Just if that's, if that was a question, it would not put us at the top. It puts us right in the middle. And the, that would put the mayor at eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars a month and, uh, the, I mean, a year, sorry. A year, woo, jackpot. I'm sorry, a year. Yeah, you'll, you'll have to be here every day, mayor. Um, a year, say, thank you. And the, the, what we also looked at is that the other communities didn't break out, um, the vice mayor or council president or whatever they, whatever they're calling, um, the, the second person that, that fills in for the mayor. Uh, but they have, uh, just a kind of a going rate for council members at eighty-four hundred dollars a year. Um, again, that doesn't put us at the top. It does, um, it does put us, make us competitive. Um, and then one thing that we are not offering, that, uh, all of the other communities are offering is health, dental, and vision insurance. And so we'd like to propose that, that we, we offer that if, if that's of interest to the, any of the counselors that are serving it. And it sounds like it would be for at least one. Um, but with that, we just, we do recognize that, uh, that we are operating under a current ordinance that would have to be changed. Uh, we'd have to update the city code and the current language to make that, that happen. Um, Carl, do you, do you recall what the language is?
Yeah, and to make that change, I think it would affect you folks. So what you're doing, yeah, you'd be doing a scheduling of pay rates. So it would be the folks, physicians that are hoping in twenty, air, that would, you know, or others.
Twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-two.
I'm correct, twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty.
Yeah, perfect. Anyway, so that, uh, we, that is in the budget. We, we included it, obviously, um, not exactly knowing what the original ordinance was and the requirements for that. But I, I think one of the things that's why this is so important and why we wanted to talk about it and why we wanted to add it was that to recognize that people's time is very important to them. And as, in looking at our last election cycle and not having enough counselors or enough people sign up to run for council, um, not exactly sure that pay was part of that. But if you looked at it, it, it certainly wasn't, uh, something that may not be attractive as well. And so, and as, as all of you will recognize, when you get stopped in the store and you show up to these meetings and all the other committee work, you know, you end up, you know, you'd be lucky if you were making half of minimum wage, um, when it's all said and done. So it certainly, it's certainly well-deserved and needed, so.
Did that change? I was talking about only the.
Right. Yeah, we, we, we feel like the, that benefit piece can be added during this fiscal year, so.
You think that change is gonna, um, have an impact on how many candidates the city gets in twenty twenty?
Uh, I, I'm hoping that a couple of steps that we take will generate more interest in running for council. Um, decent or acceptable pay, the benefits, I think, will be, will be attractive for, for those that, that don't, do not have that as, as part of what they, you know, small business people and that kind of candidate that, that may want to run. Um, a citizen, a citizen academy that I hope to start this fall. Uh, we're doing a city expo the end of this month. We're, I'm hope, what we're hoping is that we generate interest in the services and what's happening in the community to, to get that. But I think, I think the, what you get paid on a yearly basis to take time away from your family and your work and stuff does play a, a part in that.
I think, I think the biggest change in benefit to what I'm looking at is if, if you're looking to get more entrepreneurs or more downtown business people, some small business owners, um, maybe the health insurance and the dental and the vision, they may be.
Yep.
Very appreciative of that.
Yep. I think that's, and that's.
To help get more entrepreneurial people in.
That's been, I, I know that that's something that I've seen offered in the communities I've worked for in the past. And I, I know that's an attractor for sure. And I, I know that's why our, our neighbor communities are offering that, so. All right. Uh, general fund highlights. So the general fund revenue, as Tina explained, is up eight point eight percent. Um, that's two point six million. And, um, it includes keeping, um, construction sales tax in the general fund. Uh, eight point, eighty-four point six percent of the general fund revenue is comprised of TPT and state shared revenues. I know that comes as no surprise to any of you since we've talked about that number of times. Uh, state shared urban, uh, revenue sharing is up nine point five percent, which equates to just over three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, not, not chump change by any means. Uh, revenue assumptions include commercial fee wa- uh, fee waivers for twenty, uh, for twenty twenty. And, um, one of the things that we are facing is you gotta love unfunded mandates. And one of the big hits that we, we could be taking would be in the court revenue where, um, there is gonna be a more, the state law requires, um, more, uh, community service hours be offered um, as part of sentencing and paying off your fines, so. Um, ultimately, the general fund revenue, uh, Tina's pointed this out already, so I'm not gonna beat that to death. But the total, uh, revenue in the general fund is thirty-two million, four forty-five, four fifty-eight. And as I said, it is balanced against that amount of expenditures. Um, as far as the general fund operating expenditure, expenditures are concerned, they are up sixteen point eight percent. It includes a one-time payment that we've talked about of the three point one million to pay down, um, unfunded liability in the state, um, public safety retirement system. It includes, uh, the salary increase that we talked about, the two percent, the compression adjustments and, uh, the staff, uh, staffing that we've outlined. As far as the PERS increase, that equates to just under two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, that's without making any of the compensation or compression, uh, adjustments. So you, you can see that, that money adds up pretty darn quickly as, as Tina pointed out earlier. Uh, general fund transfers are up almost twenty-five percent. It includes a transfer of one point four million to capital projects. For what we're proposing to do is remodel station number two. As you recall, station number two, last year, we, or in this, not last year, it's actually in this current fiscal year, we were planning on constructing a new fire station, training grounds, and expanding the park. Um, and of course, that got pulled back because of the, um, TPT, uh, vote that happened, Prop four thirteen passing. Um, but in talking with, uh, the fire admin and Tina, the feel was that this was, this was probably a, a, a good step in the right direction to get this station functional. And of course, part of, um, moving this forward will be also improving the training grounds and having the right type of training facility for our folks, uh, for our fire folks to work on. Uh, so I think this is, that, that's a nice fix, um, to get us to, you know, obviously, I think ultimately, a new station on the east bench somewhere is ultimately probably the, the best, uh, thing that we can hope for for improved services, um, in the community for fire. All right. Um, this is the, again, we're, I'm guilty of loving pie charts and just wanted, I think picture's worth a thousand words. If you kind of want to boil that out, fire, police, make, make up about two-thirds of the budget in the general fund. And then, um, then it's the rest, the, I'll call it the other departments. Um, with, of course, parks and rec, uh, next biggest at thirteen point seven percent. Again, extremely, uh, you know, no, no doubt, extremely important to our livability of our community are those, those three, um, areas. Uh, I don't know that, you know, if you ask citizens about important departments that they'd think to, to point out, things like, uh, building and life safety, uh, but extremely important to keeping our, our community a livable place and not having buildings fall down just, um, randomly. So, um, just going over the HERF fund, of course, this is, this is where we get our streets funding. Uh, the HERF budget revenue are down, uh, forty-five point four percent. Of course, that has to do with the repeal of the half percent for TPT that was, that you all had dedicated to pavement preservation. Uh, so as, in looking at this, HERF funding, um, is down, but, but the HERF money coming in from the state, uh, will, we're projecting up a little bit. And again, depending on what the count, what the legislature does, uh, and the governor's ultimate budget will determine how much additional, uh, money we get from the, from the state. So of course, I'll remind you that we've been promised that the sweeps that were happening with HERF in the past are, are gone. And so then it just comes down to how much will they, will they have to dedicate to cities, so.
Mayor Fagan, will we get a copy of this PowerPoint?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, we will make that available. And it'll be, we can throw it on the finance department's website, webpage as well, so.
That would be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
You bet. Uh, okay, so on our enterprise funds, uh, we have water. We have customer growth rates predicting at about just under two percent, uh, revenue growth rate at one, one and a half percent. As you recall, we, we've been working on a water rate study. Uh, sorry, that has been slow in coming. Hey, we have another.
I know, but I just. I didn't pick that up.
Um, and then, so that we, we're planning on having the revised, it's, it's been through a couple of different variations now. I think we've, we've, with the consultant, got a, got a go-forward plan that really does make sense for water rates. And so, um, we will have that for the council, uh, more than likely in June. Um, and the increase is not included in the budget because we just don't, we, you know, until it's approved, um, it's really almost impossible to say what, what that's gonna be uh, when, when the council wants it to go into effect, all, all that jazz. Uh, under wastewater, uh, customer growth rate is four point six percent. Now, I, I do want to point out that that's, that's higher than water. Um, and that's, we have a program where we encourage people to connect to the sewer, the existing properties. Um, so we're not expecting, you know, it's not like you, you're not gonna come to the city and not get water and sewer, so. Um, and then revenue growth rate at five point four percent. Uh, do, and that's because, of course, wastewater has its own rate system and, um, so we're expecting good growth in revenue in the sewer fund. And, um, we, we are continuing the connection assistance program, um, that we've had over the last couple of years. As far as sanitation goes, we're expecting a, a customer growth rate of two point five percent. Uh, revenue, uh, at one point four. Sanitation rate study is, is currently underway. It will not be done. They're, they're doing field work and right now, don't anticipate that being complete until this fall. And, um, programs and services that remain unchanged are including recycling. Um, and again, I, this will not come as a surprise, our current rate structure is not keeping up with the cost of capital in, in the, in the sanitation, uh, department. Um, so, something that we, we've absolutely got to get our arms around. One of the, one of the challenges is that with the, with the growth of the city and how we're growing, where we're growing, um, one of the things that sanitation folks will, will, Eddie and Rob will tell you is that we're, we're pretty desperate to add another route. And without the equipment to add another route, uh, we, we're gonna continue to, to rely on what the rate study shows us, so. Yes?
We, um, so last year, um, Mr. Bacon had, had talked a lot about this rate study and he thought that it would be done even the end of, of last year. Um, and he was, you know, pretty blunt about the fact that he thought that the city was going to have to privatize their sanitation, uh, department because we're so far behind on, um, upgrading the trucks. And then now you're talking about adding another route. Is that something that we still think is in, is in their future?
So in the rate study, they will, of course, be looking at what privatization would do, what it would cost. Um, one of the things that is unclear, I just had a conversation about it, I want to say the end of last week or the first of this week, was what, um, what is our, do we have a, you know, we have a requirement or we, at least we feel like there's a requirement from the state that we have to pick up trash twice a week. And the question. And the question is part of what we're doing is the, in privatization, does the privatization of the sanitation system or service really allow the private hauler, haulers to only pick up once a week? And what is, why is that different? And so we're, we're really trying to understand that because you, as you can imagine, the cost to pick up once a week versus twice a week is, is dramatically different and that changes how many routes you need.
And you would need much less route.
Right, right, and, and less equipment, right, so.
Mayor Fagan, that, that subject was really discussed a lot last night, especially with Mr. Tapia there and Councilman Watkins, who is bulldog disposal.
Right.
It was a fascinating discussion, I'm sure we'll have this as we move forward because the subject of privatization was brought up and, and, and the comments were quite meaningful, especially those from Councilman Watkins who, and, and Mr. Tapia regarding uh the value that the city offers with a well-run program that it has. And that, and there were a lot of comments and a few jokes about really needing sanitation services twice a week in Kingman. Uh apart because of the heat. But the discussion of uh the recyclable bin versus the, the trash bin, obviously, the commodities market is not there for any recyclables, that we are subsidizing it. And other cities are, and private uh entities are charging.
Right, yep.
Even a ten dollar a month fee for have that recycle bin there. So I think this will be an interesting discussion, I don't think there's a given on the outcome of where we're gonna go with this. And especially after listening last night to uh a couple of things that are really compelling about all the factors we have to consider.
Yep.
In making that decision. But I did wanna say that it was very well received that our sanitation services are publicly well-respected and, and liked and, and because of the good operation and management of that department, it's a great value at this point for the ci- citizens. And changes to that program could have short-term positive impacts, but long-term be more costly. So there's a lot to consider as we go forth. And I'm, I'm talking to this at length a little bit because I did hear a lot of uh interest and concerns about this particular issue.
Vice Mayor?
Do you know that if Havasu and, and Bullhead, are they privatized or do they run their own municipal service?
I believe they're both privatized.
They are. And then um, okay, but yeah, it's definitely a big decis- decision. Cause once you give it away, you probably won't ever get it back.
That's a fact.
You wanna make sure that you make the right choice, but I think the citizens, what they're looking for is the best service at the best cost.
Right.
And, and they look at their neighbors in Bullhead and Havasu and they scratch their heads and say, you know, these people seem to be satisfied with the level of service they're getting and they're paying far less. So why it's going on in Kingman?
Right.
So that's.
Well, and that's, that's why the rate study and making sure that, that we, that we do it right to make sh- you know, and part of that is gonna be getting public input on it. You know, not everybody understands um what it takes to pick up trash and get rid of it. And, you know, part, you know, one of the things that we know that happened in our citizen survey is that our, our cr- our trash collection scored extremely high. So what the mayor's saying is that people are extremely satisfied with, with, with the collection. One of the things that I will point out, since I don't wanna, I don't wanna break this conversation because we, we will talk about sanitation later, but one of the things that I, that I do wanna point out is what the mayor, what the mayor brought up is, is that based on our location and the, the rural nature of Kingman, we have a very difficult issue to deal with, with recycling as an example. So as an example, to get rid of plastics, now we can only get rid of plastics one and two, which we have to sort. We load that, we, we collect them as much as we can, put it in the back of a truck and haul that. So we dedicate a truck and a person to drive it to Las Vegas, right? And so there's, that's a huge cost to that, to the plastics. So cardboard should be really easy, right? We would think cardboard's one of those easy things to, to, to recycle. It should be something that doesn't cost us a lot to get rid of. So the recycling on cardboard right now costs us sixty-four dollars a ton, where it takes thirty-five dollars to get rid of just.
The landfill.
The landfill, right.
There was a, as I say, there was a lot of good information last night, we need to have that discussion.
Yep.
In-depth with that type of information because it's clear that we are subsidizing recycling heavily and that that market for the west, it's not the same in the east, but for the west and particularly our area is, has just collapsed.
Yep.
And um but beyond that, and, and the other cities that are privatized with rates like twenty-nine or thirty dollars are paying that nine or ten extra dollars to have that recycling and it's voluntary.
Yep.
So there are a lot of things we'll have to look at.
And one final thing that I would just add um to this conversation is that our, ours sanitation system is, we, we are being I don't, maybe victimized is, is too strong a word, but I'm gonna go with victimized by our outside neighbors and the amount of dumping that is occurring from outside the city limits. And, and, you know, these programs, uh as, as valuable as they are, uh it's forcing us to look at how they're delivered and where they're delivered. Because we, we are subsidizing folks uh on the outside of our community that choose not to get garb- to get garbage service and it's, it's a big hit.
Being blatantly put into our recycle bins and with, we have contamination rates of up to pl- forty-plus percent.
Forty-seven percent.
And now the acceptable contamination rates are down to point five percent to be collected. So it's, it's a, it's a much bigger issue than I realized until last night.
Yep. So this, the study will be i- is much needed, um and.
Will they look at what, what we can do to keep that trash from outside the city limits? Whether it's, they can't find out for water unless they're.
Well, yeah, in, inside the city limits, that's already basically.
But outside, providing water service.
To some of them, yep, correct.
Because I think they have some in there.
It's a good idea.
Need to prove they have trash.
It's a good idea. Rob, jot that down.
Would it, will the study, uh the format of that, will it basically say at service level A, here's what the average household will see in terms of cost that's provided by the city and then private firm number one, private firm number two, sort of a managed competition type of a deal, or?
Rob, do you wanna, did you wanna weigh in on that, since you're dealing with the, with the study?
So they will look at priva- privatization, they'll do comparisons to local communities, including Havasu and Bullhead. And both of those contract with Republic Services. But they will look at, uh, we won't get into the, like an in-depth uh request for proposal.
Sure.
They'll, they'll look at the overall feasibility of, of outsourcing that and the benefits and costs associated with that.
Thanks, Rob.
So I guess just, just for your information, um this will be a recurring item on the Clean City Commission. If anybody would like to attend, we'll be talking about kind of what some of our options are as far as recycling.
Good. So any other questions about our water sewer sanitation? Okay, all right, let's move on. Uh the newest, one of our, well, new last year was our airport um fund. And uh for twenty twenty, it is our first real uh budget with them. Last year was, we had a budget for them, but it was kinda made up. We had no idea what, what, um, what would be required. We had no history uh really to work from, other than what we had for finances provided from the, the previous operators of the airport. So this year, uh airport revenue are expected to be up eight point two percent. Uh that excludes the DOJ contribution and grant revenues. Uh the primary leases revenue are down. Um and revenue uh represents, and the primary leases uh revenue represents sixty-five percent of the airport's revenue. So you can see that's a, a really important uh piece uh to our revenue stream. Uh the DOJ contrib- uh is contributing just under nine hundred thousand dollars for the draw site investigation. And um the expenditures at the airport include uh some equipment replacement. We've got some building uh demolishing that needs to happen that will free up some property and improve the value of that property. Uh of course, the environmental cleanup and assessment of land parcels. We just recently, as you recall, this last council meeting's managed to sell a piece of property, which is, is the right direction. And we'll be looking to have um uh do some more assessments and make sure that uh properties are, are usable and sellable, so. Oh yeah, um one of the questions that has come up is the, we, the, I guess, we, as in, as we've inherited uh leases, um we have, at the, the hangar leases at the airport themselves have traditionally been going up three percent um each year. Um one of the things that we are proposing in this budget is that we are, we're leaving the three percent in place as um the fact that we have different length of leases. We have these month-to-month leases and we have s- longer-term leases. The longer-term leases all have the three percent built into them. And so to keep with kind of the, where we've been with, with these leases, we're proposing that we continue that three percent lease uh increase. But um what we're doing in the, at the airport is we're actually gonna go through a study. Um and we're gonna hire someone to come in, do a rate study for us so that we, we have a organized rate structure, we know where it is and we know how it's gonna grow over time. And it'll be more geared towards industry standards and best practices that are happening at airports instead of just guessing. Um but for the time being, we're, we're proposing to keep status quo. Because like I said, we have multiple leases that are all increasing at three percent. So there was a fairness issue and then we would deal with that at the, as the completion, at the completion of the rate study. Yes, sir?
My question would be, is that recommendation to continue the three percent, is that consistent with the Airport Advisory Commission? Cause I know that they were looking at hangar leases and what I thought that they had recommended to the city and to council was that, that there would be no increase until that the study was done? And then we would roll out whatever the results of the study were?
Yeah, unfortunately, we're not able to push the brakes on the long-term or the, the written contract leases at three percent. And um I just, Tina and I just heard about um that, as a matter of fact, yesterday. So um, yeah, I, I, that will ultimately belong to the city council, you're the ones that set the, the rates.
I think that needs to come to council, I mean, the, the recommendation of the airport commission because I wouldn't support going against that commission, just myself. I, I think that we should kinda partner with them and do what they think that.
Yeah, I don't know, hon- honestly, I don't know what the, I don't know what the past practice has been for your, your um commissions. I don't see how this is a policy issue. This is an operational issue and having revenues cover expenditures seems a little bit out of the scope of, of a commission, but I'm willing to look into it for sure.
I guess my question then would be, why would the airport commission even look at it?
I, uh, that would be my question as well. Like I said, I, I didn't, I didn't realize till yesterday that this was, that this was even an, an issue, so.
They have spent many months researching what, what other airports are charging. One of my concerns is that it, there are all these different leases and some people that were friends with the right person pay much less, others pay much more. Are we going to fix tho- are, are those long-term leases going to be able to come in at some point and all be put on a level playing field?
Yes, that, that's the point of having this, this rate study done so that we're not guessing who, who's, who got the sweetheart deals and who didn't.
But that's just it, like, if you did get a sweetheart deal, then you're only gonna be paying three percent on a sweetheart deal. And somebody that didn't get a sweetheart deal is gonna be paying three percent on a non-sweetheart deal. So wouldn't it make more sense to just freeze everybody's rate right now until the rate study's done? And then that will give you time to not only go through the rates individually on each lease, but also.
Well, I'd have to.
Consideration of the study, right?
I'd have to leave that up to the city attorney to speak to the, how the contracts work. I, you know, and the ability to, to freight, to, to freeze an existing contract uh rate increase. I, that's something we're gonna have to look into.
As, as well as we need to make sure we're complying with all the FAA rules.
Correct.
Regarding the, the fair market value, um as well as the discriminatory actions. You have to, you can't discriminate against other parties within the, the airport and airport properties. Those are things we have to consider. And I think you even look at the, there's a zero vacancy rate at the airport, at the hangars. So that would almost imply that the prices are too low.
Well, I'll ask you guys the same question I asked the airport authority, what is the three percent tied to?
That's a contract that was drafted. So what they did is, there.
It's just an arbitrary three percent.
Correct.
It's not tied to anything, right?
Correct.
I think it's important um for staff to know that in the previous year, the last operator did waive that three percent and they might have even done it twice, now I won't toward that, but I know that they've at least waived that three percent increase um in the past. And so um if we're going to keep it, if we're going to increase by three percent, we need to be able to deliver um, you know, some kind of value for that.
I, I would suggest we have delivered, I, I would suggest you look at our track record over the last year and I would, I would say that we've, we've gone above and beyond.
We, we absolutely, we have, we've added value, but are we, can we give them a timeline? We're going to, we're taking out those ad expense to do the rate increase and then, or to, excuse me, to do the, the survey to see, you know, what the rates should be and then how long will it take us? Is it gonna take a year to get everybody on the same page or is it this multi-years? I, I think it'd be nice if we could go back.
We've gotta know that, you're absolutely right.
This is what you can expect, yes, you're paying more, but we've added value and, you know, better services and we're also going to fix some of these ongoing problems that, that everybody's always been upset about.
Yep.
But I'd like to be able at least to have, have that, cause I have the airport meeting.
Got it, yeah.
What I would say is um they have spent a considerable amount of time on this issue.
They have.
And something similar happened not too long ago with the Economic Development Commission, where they looked at an issue that they maybe shouldn't have and then the council or the city went a different way and it made a bunch of people mad. And that's exactly what's gonna happen with this commission is that you're gonna make all these people that have spent all these, these hours looking at this, you're gonna upset them and make them feel like they're not valued.
Okay.
And so I think that you really need to get a handle on your commissions and working together as a city because that's why we have problems getting people to sit on commissions because they spend hours looking at this stuff and the city just totally just goes, and we're gonna go do this.
Okay.
So why are they spending their time?
Yeah, I, I thought that the, I thought that the, the effort had been on talking about the, a rate study and having a consultant come in and, and that's, that's where I thought the time had been spent, so. All right, good, thank you. Ten thirty, we've been talking for a little while. Let's uh, let's, Mayor, what do you think about a five-minute break?
Let's take a five-minute break.
Perfect.
I think we should go back into session. All right, so I called this meeting back to order, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, um, operating budgets. As um, as I explained, I am going to walk you through. As, um, as I explained, I am going to walk you through the operating budgets. What you will see in these operating budgets is, well, let's, let's, let's look at yours as an example. Perfect. So, uh, what we have done is we, basically what you'll see under the budget highlights is you're gonna see that the, whether the budget is status quo, you're gonna see if there's an increase, what that increase is, or if there's a decrease, and then what accounts for those increases and decreases. So, um, of course, council budget, forty-four point eight percent increase. Council salaries reflect the increase and the option to participate in health, uh, uh, health group ins- uh, health insurance, dental and vision is included. And of course, um, we had included the increase for wages or the stipend, I should say, uh, for the mayor and council. Uh, internal, you will see, and I, I will, I'm not gonna point this out with every single, with every single department. There is, because there are increases in the internal revenue, um, funds, everybody will s- will see some type of increase within their budgets for this. So as an example, internal services allocation increase for council will be just over fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, and then the explanation of that is building maintenance allocation, um, and IT services. Okay, so, yes, sir?
Um, under supplies and services, um, what, what is included in that? That's to send everybody to the, the league conference?
Correct.
Um, is there other, um, funds in there to send like a couple of council members to the Main Street conference or, um, maybe get involved with like IEDC?
Or the National League or that?
AED, for instance, or?
Yeah, there, there's a, there's some little extra funds in there to do that. The Main Street, um, program was paid for out of, um, a different budget. I believe it was anyway, is that right, Gary? Did you pay, you came out of the ED budget?
To send, to send council?
To send whoever would, yeah, so it was Jamie and some of the, um, folks that were, that are tied to the downtown for the Main Street, yes? Oh, it came, oh, it did, oh, okay, I thought Gary paid for it all, so.
And then, um.
So the answer is yes, it's covering that.
Recon, if we, if the city sends a, a delegation to the ICSC or the recon, that's, is that? I mean, for council, cause I would hate for a council member or the mayor.
We will find the money.
To affect the department's budget.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, we have additional money built in there to, to have some of that happen. If, uh, you know, if we had a big push, we would, it would, we would find it in ED's or tourism's budget. If it, if it's gonna be a benefit to the city, we would find that. Because it's impossible for us to, you know, to, to budget or guess with all the, you know, with the mayor's request to have to be down at the legislature, there's, you know, there's, there's extra money in there, what it ends up being used for, um, it is gonna be, it's gonna vary.
Yeah, but you can play in some of the conferences and things like that.
That's right.
Okay.
Yep.
And that, that's all included in this?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, it is. Um, so that's councils, not, not a huge amount of change, um, other than, other than the big change for what, what the compensation for council is. Okay, next. So, uh, city manager's budget, uh, it has twenty, twenty-one point eight percent increase. Uh, there's, of course, and al- also I, I won't keep repeating myself. Uh, in, in these changes, of course, is two percent increase for, uh, employee compensation. Uh, since, uh, the contract, uh, since my contract, uh, won't be, uh, reviewed until, um, May of next year. This, um, there's this three percent increase there. Uh, supplies and services increase, uh, two strategic planning retreats. Uh, so we're gonna continue to, to push towards having, uh, strategic planning with the council. We're going, I'm going to continue to hold leadership training, uh, with my leadership team and, uh, in looking at doing another citizen survey as part of what I offer from, from my department. Uh, and then the international, or the, I'm sorry, the internal services increase is just under sixty-eight hundred dollars. Again, that, that's gonna be consistent across all the departments based on how many computers and what the requirements are, uh, within the, within the internal services. Uh, so, uh, my budget, um, from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty is gonna move, being proposed to move from just under three hundred and seventy thousand dollars to four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars or that twenty-one point eight percent increase. The city attorney's, uh, budget, um, the, the big piece, this is a twenty-five point eight percent increase. I pointed this out earlier, is that we are in desperate need in the, in the city attorney's department to make sure that we have, um, a second for Carl. And to, there is a great amount of work that is, that he is not able to get to that we, we desperately need someone working on. In addition to the fact that if Carl goes on vacation, um, ended up sick for a couple of weeks, knowing that, that our work will continue i- is extremely important. And so we are proposing that an assistant city attorney be added, um, to his department. And I don't know that we have place for that person, but we'll, we'll figure it out, right, Carl? The break room, right, so the break room. Yeah, there you go. Um, that, that's, that's really the, the big piece to that, um, increase. Uh, they've got, uh, internal services allocation of just under sixty-seven thousand. And of course, again, that goes back to building maintenance and IT. Uh, the one thing, um, would be that with, one of the things that we're trying to do is be more technologically advanced in what we're doing. And we're, in the budget, you'll see that we are proposing to do, uh, E-citation system. Um, basically that would allow officers that are doing traffic, uh, shifts to be able to generate like actually, um, electronic tickets instead of having to handwrite them, so. So that's kind of the, uh, city attorney's budget. Anything, did I miss anything, Carl, in yours?
No.
Yeah, it's, the, obviously the biggest one is the deputy city, uh, attorney. And I, I think, um, as far as having, um, knowledge, continue, having good backup, we, we've gotta get someone in that position and learning it, learning the, the, the ropes on how to be a city attorney so that eventually when Carl gets to the point where he wants to retire, we have someone that can pick up and move on. And obviously, one of the places where you don't want gaps is in your city attorney's knowledge. So, pretty, pretty important position, so.
So this change will allow Carl to, um, move away from some of the more day-to-day stuff and during your last performance, we talked about some of those high-level things that you really didn't have the time or the, to get to.
I've, I've heard of this referred to as, as, as the bus situation where Carl got hit by a bus tomorrow. Would we be able to pick up and keep moving forward?
He says, the, the two folks I have right now are criminal attorneys. Buying your time to criminals that are, really, they're, they're overworked. That, the information they usually provide is they may show up to be, I don't have that.
Yeah, and the other part of that is I think that this will give us an opportunity to get, to look at, take some time and be able to spend some time looking at old ordinances that need to be cleaned up. We're, we're desperate to clean up some old ordinances and give that some attention, so.
I'm looking forward to voting for this because that pretty seemed up to look at special districts under Title Forty-eight.
Yep.
Mr. Fogg, and also too, I think it's, it's, it's the contracts because certainly the last year, going through the airport exercises, we have been, and that, and it's not gonna stop for a while, cause we're still building those contracts, so, that's.
Good point. All right, next one. Oh, city clerk. Uh, city clerk's, um, budget is going to reflect a four percent decrease. We have, um, the cost of the, the person that was gonna, that sat up front last year, uh, is going away. And so supplies and services are increasing by twenty-five percent. Um, that's for our efforts on the twenty-twenty census. And then we're proposing, um, a thirty thousand dollar, um, voter education consultant as part of this as we look at promoting, whether it be, um, uh, additional sales tax increase, um, some kind of property tax increase. Um, we would, we would like to use, uh, professional marketing folks that, that specialize in this work, uh, if, if and when the council decides that they wanna do something with that. So I think that both of those would be money well-spent, the twenty-five thousand. Obviously, you've heard me say this in the, uh, previous meetings, but I think it's worth reiterating. A short count for, for Kingman in the twenty-twenty census, uh, could easily, could easily result in a half a million dollars a year lost. And if you just take that over a ten-year period, that's five million dollars of state rare, shared revenue that would go to somebody else. Certainly wouldn't come to us. So I think the twenty-five thousand for that is, would be money well-spent. I know that Havasu is budgeting money for this as well. Bullhead's budgeting money for this. We're keeping our fingers crossed that the county's gonna allocate some money towards the twenties, twenty census, uh, total count. And we know that it's also being proposed that the state, uh, is going to provide a little bit of money to cities to help take this on as well, so. All right, did you, am I supposed to skip court until they get that? So, uh, the judge was, his caseload was such that he will not be here until noon today, so we, we will come back, let him speak to, to his budget a little bit or I'll cover it and he can answer any questions for you there. Uh, so the finance department, uh, the finance department's budget reflects a, almost a fifteen percent increase. The, um, the, the most important thing, uh, expenditure in, in the finance department is the assistant finance director, services director position. Uh, Tina and her team are, are doing a lot of work with just a few people and they're like in Carl's office, they're not keeping up, not even close. And our ability to look deeper into financial policies and make sure that we are following the best practices outlined by the Government Finance Officers Association. Tina is so far in the weeds on day-to-day stuff that our ability to be progressive is just not there. And so that position is gonna be extremely important, uh, to their success moving forward. Um, they do have a little bit of a decrease, uh, in supplies and services due to the fact that last year, we did a major rollout of mu- the munis payroll system and the HR system that is in place and is functioning, I think, extremely well right now. We will, of, of course, continue to tweak that, but that, um, that has eliminated our need for our payroll, our third-party payroll provider. We're doing, as you recall, we're doing payroll in-house now entirely, which, um, is a great thing, it's good cost savings for us. The, we are looking at a software to help us better track our public safety retirement system and to give us better modeling, which I think will help us better understand how much money we actually need to be putting away towards that thirty million dollars. Uh, so that's gonna be a really important purchase. Um, and then we also have the, um, an annual safekeeping custodial fee, fees that, um, are gonna be part of their budget. And so, um, their, their budget from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty is gonna go from nine hundred and sixty-five thousand to one point, one million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, so. Anything we need to add, Ms. Tina? Oh. Oh, okay, sorry, yes, keep me, keep me, keep me corrected. Okay, utility billing, this is the other piece of Tina's. Oh, did I skip one? We will, yeah, right. If anybody, the mayor's not gonna miss engineering, so. It's all in the book. Sorry, Greg. I, I, I went through this yesterday. That's funny. All right, uh, engineering was, of course, part of the personnel request. They, they've, Greg's been working on a little, I'll say, a restructuring of his, um, division, uh, as well as public works. Uh, Greg has, um, an employee that is retiring in an effort to kind of make sure that we're moving in a, in a more effective and efficient way. Um, he is proposing that, um, we hire a plans examiner. I should point out, the recommended budget reflects a three point four percent increase overall. And in that, uh, is that, is a full-time plans examiner. Under the supplies and services, the increase is due to implementation of a fifty thousand dollar quality assurance program. Greg, did you wanna comment on, on that program and what it'll do for, for your department?
Thank you, Rob. As it is now, when, when, when a new road's built, we're kind of taking the word of the developer and the contractor that, that those, those items are, are done in that fashion. And this would just give us the ability to go out and do our own checks and verifications to ensure that we're getting the best, the best product. to ensure that we're getting the best, the best product. And it, we've worked again with, with Rob and Jack on this to come up with this, this plan. And hopefully it, it helps out on payment preservation costs in the future.
Right, and I just wanted to make sure he got that in there because that, that is gonna be, I think, a key to us as we, as we do pavement management and we, and we make, not only on pavement management, but we're making sure that the inventory that we're bringing in is, is tracked and, and evaluated as, to, to the highest specification possible, so. Appreciate that Greg. So Greg's budget is, is like I said, increasing slightly. That's about $70,000 increase overall for, for his budget, so. Alright, Ms. Tina, now that, now that we, we've gotten Greg done. So utility billing, that's another division of Tina's group. And their recommended budget reflects no significant changes overall. It's, they're basically gonna be status quo from last year. Of course, they're, we're recognizing the increase for the employees. But the personnel costs decreased overall due to the budget and tax administrator's salary being completely absorbed within the finance department for, for 2020. And then during the first six months, the tax administrators, administrator's salary was, was being covered by utility billing because the position acted on, for the project manager for the Munis conversion. So that, that's a status quo budget for you, pretty much unchanged, I guess. By what Tina, a thousand dollar difference, less, so. Not much to report on utility billing. So fire administration, fire administration, they are, their recommended budget is an increase of 6.2%. They have the 2%, as we've talked about. Additionally, as, as we've discussed, there's the compression correction within their budget to help kind of spread those employees out over the pay range. As you recall, they, everybody kind of got grouped in the front and no one was really progressing forward. So we are gonna make that fix. Of course, Tina's covered this to a great degree. There'll be a one-time payment, half of which will come out of the fires portion of what we owe, 1.5 million. There is supplies and services increase. Turnover in the department, travel, training, uniforms have all increased. Our turnover, is that supposed to be turnouts? Oh, training, yeah. Turnover for training, yes, okay. So we're, we're having to outfit and train more of our, our new employees. And then we have $20,000 included to, for restoration of fire engine. Now I point this out as, I don't know how many of you know this, but we have an amazing old fire engine, 1921, 22. A 1922 fire engine that we would like to make as part of a regular standing entry into parades and celebrations of the city. And the department would like to do this and they feel like there's enough folks that are interested in this engine that they, they will donate. So of course, when we, when we have a, a big expenditure, even if it's, the donations are coming, we still need to budget for it. So that, wanted to just point out that that $20,000, it'll be awesome to have that fire engine redone, but it will be done as donations roll in, so just wanted to point that out. Internal revenue for the fire admin is just under 65,000. And the one thing that the fire department is doing is that they've, they have a decrease due to reduction in annual software maintenance fees, which is always a nice thing. The dispatch center allocation increased due to increased costs experienced from the 18, from, has increased since budget year 18. Again, has a lot to do with personnel turnover and having to train and uniform those folks. But also working through the CLIA accreditation is pretty important. And then the, the software that we've been talking about as well, so. And then we have fairly big requests for capital outlay within the fire admin to improve their communication equipment. And one of the things that I was hoping that Chief Rhodes could speak to is, is that piece because it's, that, that, that equipment is pretty important as, as we move forward. So Chief, do you wanna grab a microphone and just speak to that?
So a couple of things we've done over the last, I think, three years we started doing this. With certain larger ticket items such as personal protective equipment, vehicle education equipment, and other cardiac monitors, those type of things, instead of trying to do it in one lump sum, we've kind of spaced that out over, over a year. So we get so much per year to really, to really manage those programs. And radios this year is one of those, technology like anything else. You go buy, buy a cell phone and a year later it's obsolete. Well, the radio industry's no different in, in that right now it's, it's, our current radios are going on seven to eight years old. And actually to buy replacements and batteries and things this year, we bought them off eBay this last year. So, and that is, that's a real story because they're, they're discontinued and they're not supported anymore. So, so replacement of those kind of starts in small, small ways, small chunks. And that's what, that's what part of this is. And it continues, so continues with that as, as well as there's a, a couple other vehicle replacements in there as well. So it, it kind of follows the pattern of what we've been doing. Instead of trying to do the whole radio project at once and then having to think five years from now, do it again in a large chunk, we just keep the upkeep throughout the years. And all that maintenance and everything goes in that as well, so.
Yeah, good, yeah, so that's something that we will see over, over time as we, we add to the communication piece of that. So just wanted to make sure everybody understood kind of what that was all about, yes?
I have a question. It seems I recall that we had previously discussed need for the large equipment, the fire engines and things of that nature. Are there things that have just been put on, have not made it to the budget this year? But now that we're seeing the budget in a different way, we're not seeing all the things that were, that are needed but is not asked for.
Yeah, and so what you'll see on those, those big, big ticket items, those, those will show up in the capital projects.
Okay.
The five-year capital projects fund. So we, we do have some what I'll call minor, albeit.
Yeah, I saw the capital outlet here, so I.
Yeah, and that's.
Jogged my memory.
Yeah, and that's a good, that's a good, good point. Like the chief said, he's got a couple of, of vehicles that'll be replaced. And there's a, like I said, the communication piece was, is a really important piece and I want to make sure that we spoke to that.
Thank you.
But yes, fire engines and all that jazz, the big, the big ones you will see in capital projects, so. And then the other piece to, to what Chief Rhodes oversees is what we refer to as the fire, fire station budget. And just really, there's no changes to this. We just want to make sure that we showed you, showed you that it does have a budget and, you know, it's changing by about $2,000, so not, not much to report there. Building and life safety, there's no significant changes in this budget as well. Some of the highlights of it are that supplies and services increase due to addition, the addition of a $30,000 community training program. I guess that's worth pointing out. The other thing is the overall cost for personnel for this department is, is down. So, and that, I, why is that down? Oh, that's right. So the election changes for, for, for folks that are moving from the traditional to the high deductible. So that's a, that's a positive. And then not, not too much more to report on that one, so. Dispatch center, this, this one has some big things to talk about, so let's, let's get right into it. The, there is a request, the chief, as he has looked at the dispatch, he would like to take the, the dispatch manager, who is an extremely important person within our, within the, the emergency process, emergency call-out process. And so the idea would be that the communications center manager position be reclassed to more accurately reflect the responsibilities and duties that she is being asked to carry out. And then on the supplies and services, the increase, I pointed out a little bit earlier in the fire admin, but there's the, the Capers annual software is, is very expensive but very necessary. There is gonna be some costs associated with the accreditation process. And again, with, with other public safety and folks, we've had some turnover that requires some additional cost for uniforms and training. And then the internal revenue service is, is going, is up. They are gonna be doing, is not up, it's down. For some reason I thought their internal, it's down due to lower annual software maintenance costs. For some reason I thought that was going up, but. And then of course, the big, the big part of what's happening in dispatch is there, there's a couple of software pieces that, that we're contemplating adding. One is the automatic dispatch alerting system for just under 270 and the replacement of the radio consoles, the, just under a quarter of a million dollars. And I, the, the replacement of the, obviously the replacement of the radio consoles and making sure that those are functioning to the best of their, their abilities, as I think goes without saying. But one thing that, that may be confusing is the dispatch alerting system. And so I, I want Chief Rhodes to just let you know what that entails because it ultimately ends up being a pretty important piece, so Chief?
So with both of these, and the implementation of our new CAD, you can kind of tie all this in together into one, one piece. And that, when you're talking about the radio consoles, probably a bad analogy is, is putting a, putting a Hemi engine into a Pinto. And that's kind of what we're got, it's kind of that technology piece that we've had on the radar for several years in the consoles. So you liked that, didn't you? That's awesome. It would be very cool with some flames down the side, I don't know. But the, so the, the other part is the automated dispatch piece. And that is, the way we run our dispatch centers, we have a dedicated, when we're staffed, we have a person on police, a person on fire supervisor, and that's what they do. The thing that we lack is a dedicated call taker who, who can divert some of these calls and do some of those things. So we're kind of limited, we're very limited in staffing. And it's high turnover in, in dispatch centers anyway. So what this piece does is it gives us an automatic piece. So for instance, when somebody calls and you're gathering information, there's a point during that emergency that the dispatcher has to say, hold on a minute, so they can dispatch the call. What this does is that multitasking piece, while they're taking the information, they're, they're typing and they press a button. They continue to talk to the, the reporting party and continue to gather and update that information because those are very dynamic calls anyway. As they press this button, units are dispatched automatically. So what they'll hear is a robot voice. And it will actually dispatch units to go that way and what the emergency is and locations, those type of things. Very sophisticated decision, uh, uh, system that saves about 15 to 20 seconds that additional information we gathered and, and go forward with that. So it's a piece that, that helps us save time and make those more accurate calls, as both on police and fire. And as you know, we, we're running about 60,000 calls, pushing 60,000 calls between the districts. And of course, the police department has the, the major piece of that. But automating that system will help us out with time and ac, probably the most important thing is accuracy as that dynamics of that initial 15 to 30 seconds of gathering information can change so much in there. So that's what that is.
Any questions about that? Okay, thanks Chief, appreciate it. Alright, HR and risk management. Oh, it wraps over to the next page. Okay, well, you can look, reference your book, let's go back to the. So Jackie and her team take on HR and, and risk. They have, in their budget for HR is an increase of just under 9%. And for risk, it is an increase of 26.6%. The, of course, the, the big portion of what's happening for them, or a bigger portion, is that they've got in desperate need of a vehicle. As we were talking about vehicles at last council meeting, the hand-me-down vehicle that HR's been driving probably shouldn't have been in the fleet for the last at least five years. And we've had some real, it's kind of, I don't know, is it ironic that the HR risk folks are driving the, the sketchiest vehicle? Yeah, so, but other pieces to what's happening in, in their department is that their supplies and services are, are increasing due to anticipated increases in recruitment, recruitment costs. We know that, that as we have more jobs open, more time spent on recruiting people. And then there's gonna be a cost to conduct a job audit. And with new people coming on, we, we just recently have a new person and our need to make sure that they're trained both in Munis and in, and to get their HR certifications is gonna be extremely important for our professionalism within the HR department. So I believe that covers everything for HR and risk, yes sir?
Just one question that would apply to all departments. And the SHRM certification sort of sparked that in my head. But is there professional development that's plugged in for all the departments?
Yes.
Moving forward, you gotta be careful with how many people you hire, right? Because someday there's gonna be a recession and we, we're all sales tax.
Right.
So you wanna make sure that the people that you do have are as good as they can be, right?
Right.
So everybody does have a professional development budget?
Yeah, so one of the things that I, that I spent time with on the, and that's a great question, thanks Vice Mayor, is one thing that my leadership team knows is I expect them to, to be getting trained and that the people, if we're going to have succession planning, like you're seeing in, in conversation, is that our succession planning means that we're spending time training our people and getting them the certifications to be successful leaders as we move forward. So every, I would say that every department has a, a good amount of training and certification-type budgets to make sure that that's happening.
What's the old adage, what if we train them and they leave and they say, what if we don't and they stay?
Right, that's exactly right. And that's what, there is so much to that. And like I said, the ability, and I know that everybody kind of gets tired of hearing me say this, but if we're not, if we're not investing in our employees and thinking that they're gonna be the next leaders, we're, we're really missing an opportunity to grow our own. And that training budget and where we're sending people and what they're learning is extremely valuable to that piece.
Sharpen that saw, man.
Yep, exactly right. So yeah, thank you for that.
And I'd like to add that I really appreciate when you put out the announcements. I think there were some in engineering and public works and whatnot, of people getting certifications and professional development certifications. And I think it's really good to celebrate that and announce it as you're doing and, and it keeps all of us aware of that professional development ladder. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
And I also really appreciate the succession planning that you're building into the structure. It really is. It really is very good for the city long-term, so thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And, do you wanna just hang, go back? And so, just, uh, wanted to, to show you, kind of, that, that large increase is spread, uh, between our, between the risk function and the HR function. Uh, obviously, I am extremely interested in making sure that we, as an organization, our, the top priority is that we're being safe and that safety is our number-one concern. And that means that we're gonna spend some more time with dealing with risk improvement. And so, um, I appreciate Jackie and her team's, uh, willingness, um, to make sure that that's happening. And, uh, having a, having a safety program is, uh, part of this, uh, is gonna be important for the employees. What we know about safety in an organization is it's top-down. And, you know, employees, there may be a couple of employees that show up and demand to, to be safe, but that usually is our human nature to look for the easiest way to get something done. And if that means putting a ladder in the back of a truck to reach something, um, it's probably not something we wanna ever see. And so, um, anyway, so there is, there is some increase, um, there. And, but I think we'll see better programs and a safer, uh, track record as we move forward, so. All right, IT. Uh, IT has been, if, if you, if you don't know, over the last year, they have been extremely busy. We've introduced some major, major, heavy-duty, uh, software programs. Uh, we've, either they're new or they're beefier than they have been. Um, and with that, uh, you're seeing a twelve-point-seven percent increase for IT. Uh, a big portion of that is the request for an additional IT coordinator in that we have with, with Munis and with the Tyler system. We have, one of our IT people that's, that position's pretty much been eaten up by just taking care of those two major software systems. So, this person will help backfill what was being done prior. Obviously, with IT, a lot of it's reactionary, um, in that you gotta keep people's computers up and running. Uh, without a computer, most of our people, uh, that have computers would have no work to do, because they were dependent, their works depended on computers. Um, their, uh, their supplies and services are increasing, um, due to implementation costs that we honestly don't know exactly what they're gonna be yet. E-citation system and, um, the annual technical support services from Tyler and Munis, uh, they always find a way to increase their, their rates, interestingly enough. The other piece that, um, is, that they have is that they've got a, they've worked with the city clerk and, and we are going to put in, finally, I think this is probably way overdue for our, for our community, is a citywide document management system where we're going to try to spend less on paper and try to create that system where we've got things scanned in, searchable and much more usable. Makes, uh, records requests quicker. We're not having to copy, and we can generate electronic files of that kinda stuff. So, their, their capital A includes, uh, implementation of that system. Uh, it'll roll out to a few departments. It'll, we'll, that will test for a year. If it goes well, we'll have more documentation, uh, scanning and more of our elec- more of all of our electro- our documents electronically. So, I think that will make us, uh, much more efficient. It'll certainly mean we're spending less on paper, so. Dave, Dave, do you wanna grab your mic? Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Are those costs sort of like front-loaded? If we're using some, some kind of document management system that's electronic, those like front-loaded costs? Because talking about saving money in terms of paper, although we're using more money for the documented management system, but like over time, will it, it will, it will sort of pay for itself financially to some degree?
Yes, and, and, you know, the less, the more scanning we do, less filing cabinets we buy, the less reams of paper we buy, the faster it is to turn around information. It just, yeah, it all, it, and then if we, the more we spread that across departments, you take just what's happening in the clerk's office and then take that to the planning department, take that to the police department, take it to the fire department, and you, you start realizing, uh, you're recouping your money really pretty quickly.
Okay.
And can I add one thing on that as well, is you, it facilitates your records retention. You're gonna have your contracts scanned in there, and you're gonna also be able to search for all your contracts. You're gonna have end dates for your contracts, so we don't have something like, "Oh, we missed this." We're, we're like three months past the contract, or we wanted to get out of the contract, we need to provide some notice. So, a lot of this, it's not a magic bullet to everything, but a lot of this facilitates some of that man- like say, it's management, uh, that'll make my life easier, you know, the clerk's life easier, public records requests, this tie up so much time for me, because looking, redacting, and, and providing those documents. So, it's a huge bonus and time saver, and that's how you save a lot of that money as well, so.
Procurement department would help you with that.
Ron, I think the other thing is, like, in planning and zoning, it just frees up valuable office space. I mean, right now, we've got it, I mean, we got a closet full, an office full, and so I'm sure that's across the board for a lot of departments, but it's, it'll allow us to expand without a lot of problems.
Yeah, the more, the more filing cabinets that go away just allows us, as we, you know, as, well, as an example, um, as, when we get to economic development, we'll be talking about it in greater detail. But, when you, when you need that new position, well, we talked about it for, for Carl's office. You know, if, if we have the opportunity to remove filing cabinets, that the ability to do stuff, different stuff with the space is, is a big part of that. But, I do wanna echo what Carl said, and that is, and I've, I've experienced this in every single, uh, city organization that I've been in. And that is, you, you get a, you get a letter or you get an email two weeks before a contract or a franchise agreement is gonna expire, and every, everybody's scrambling because the spreadsheet that you were using to track contracts, uh, didn't, didn't have the ability to alert, to alert you. So, I mean, that, that ability to act, be proactive on contracts that are expiring will, will definitely be a huge benefit, uh, to this organization. I, I have, I have eleven-thirty, Mayor. Do you wanna break for some food?
Yes.
Perfect.
Let, shall we take a half hour? Or shall we get food and keep working?
Are we doing okay?
We're, we're just kinda soaring through here.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, a little bit extended to, for people to make calls and, and to eat and relax.
Let's go for a half hour and start again at twelve.
Perfect.
This meeting back to order. Manager Foggan?
Thank you, Mayor. Do wanna note that we're, we are missing, uh, Counselor Mellor Keener. Mellor Keener, so, but, we said we were gonna start at noon, so, let's, let's continue. Uh, so, um, we're gonna actually go back in our notes to the court. The, um, the judge, uh, is not able to be here until tomorrow. And by the time, uh, he gets here, we, we may be done with the process. So, we're just, I'm gonna just jump back. There's, there's really no, uh, major changes in the court. We've talked about kind of their revenue challenge that they're gonna have with requirements to offer more community service. Um, but with that said, on their, on their expenditure side, their budget reflects only a one-point-eight percent, uh, decrease. Uh, so, really, that's, I would call that close enough to status quo to not really have really too much to say about, um, their budget other than to say that, um, you got a great presentation on the programs, one of the programs that they offer. And I think it's, it's really clear to, to everybody that the court is, um, moving people through and trying to be as, as customer service-friendly. We don't get, I don't know, uh, about you folks, but I know that, um, I would, I would receive some negative comments if there was problems at the court, and I, I think they're doing a, a great job. So, um, really, that's all I wanted to say about the court. Uh, their, their adopted budget versus where they are in the 2020 budget was that they're actually, uh, of course, down by that two, almost two percent. Um, and the judge was, was giving everybody a, a hard time saying that, that he, that he came in less this year. So, he was, he was pleased with that as well, so.
Manager Foggan, now that we have negotiated the, uh, city magistrate's contract, will that be reflected by a change in this?
So, I don't know what kind of that, but he did exactly what the judge was requesting already in this budget. So, the numbers that are in there are what he was requesting.
And that, that's, that's good. And, um, but I'm just wondering, will it be, will this sentence be changed in the final document? Okay.
Yeah, thank you for that moment.
Thank you.
Yep, good point.
And I just wanted to, I know the judge would want us to share that he did decrease his jail fees again this year by almost twenty percent from three-sixty to three-hundred thousand dollars. So, that was really important.
That's, that's.
Good point.
Really terrific. Thank you.
Good point. All right, that will take us to recreation. Um, I look around the room, and I know Mike was unable to be here today. Um, but I'm gonna do my best to, to cover his information. And if we have anything that I'm unable to answer, uh, more than likely Tina will be able to answer it. And if we together can't, then he'll be here tomorrow, and any, any follow-up questions can be asked of him. On the recreation admin side, uh, they have a increase of four-point-four percent. The, um, really, the, the only thing that is of, uh, significance worth pointing out is that they do have a capital, uh, project in their budget for, uh, digital notification sign. Um, I actually, in talking with Mike, have, my recommendation is that this actually, this would be something that appears over the next two or three years. Um, is that we, we need multiple, uh, signs that are doing a better job of communicating what we're doing with recreation, with parks, with community events, and other just informational pieces that we, I think we are desperate to get out to the community as people drive around. We know that these are, these type of signs are extremely, uh, successful in other communities. And so, this would be kind of a, I, I will call it a phased project over the next two or three years, where we add, um, several that, in key locations where there's a lot of traffic by them. So, um, that's, that's, uh, the recreation admin. Not, again, not a lot to report to. Oh, yes, Vice Mayor.
Uh, the location of that proposed sign?
Uh, not determined yet. We're, like I said, I think part of what we're gonna do is find out where, where we can place these and then try to just hit the, the big, get the biggest bang for our buck, um, as we place them, so.
Would they be, um, in commercial areas? They wouldn't be placed next to residences, right?
No, 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 no.
Or special areas where people are gonna have to have light, light pollution?
No, no, this, this would be where there's har- heavy traffic on arterial and collector roads, where you're, you know that, you, you know, you're, you're gathering cars and pedestrians and bikes. Uh, and then they're gonna be passing by them. So, yeah, the usefulness of these is to get them, you know, if you could hand, if you could handpick a spot, it would be, uh, I don't know, sixty-six and Stockton Hill Road, as an example. And, you know, both, both ends of Stockton Hill Road, and, you know, where else, where else could it be? You know, somewhere on sixty-six, you know, uh, I don't know what a good, good cross street would be, but, you know, something down sixty-six somewhere.
Some sort of a commercial corner.
Yeah, yep, exactly right. Yep, exactly right. And the pools, um, the pools are at, uh, three percent decrease. Um, really, uh, again, not a lot of change in here. There's no major capital projects anticipated. Uh, we have been able to decrease the cost, the, the big cost of running pools, which is the natural gas cost. Um, just based on, I, uh, we just have been budgeting a lot and running them more than we needed to. So, um, again, not a lot to report there. It's, you know, a little, a little, a little decrease. I'd ca- I'd call that status quo as well. For the golf course, of course, this, um, is our first year budgeting for the entire operations of the golf course. So, we find ourselves a, a little bit in, uh, the same, the same place we were a little bit with the airport last year, where all the unknowns, uh, are yet to be discovered. Um, but for what we're, what we're providing here is a six-point-five percent increase. I think this is a, a pretty reasonable budget, um, for the golf course. The personnel costs, uh, some of that increase would be to, um, take the golf super, the assistant golf superintendent and reclassify that position to just a superintendent. Now that we have a golf pro, uh, in place, that seems to make more sense. Uh, irrigation technician is being reclassified, uh, as well as we're, because we're asking that position to do, um, uh, more, and the tech, the technical side of it is, is increasing for what we're doing at the golf course. And then, um, other than that, uh, that's kinda where we, we are. It's based on our fiscal year nineteen adopted budget. We're about ninety thousand, uh, more on the budget. But, again, this one's one of those where we don't have a full year of operating the, the golf course to be able to, to have the best picture. But I think Tina and Mike, uh, did a good job of, of trying to capture everything that, all, kind of all those unseens are unknown, so.
Do you think that the increased cost might be offset by increased sales this year?
So, that's, bless you. So, yes, we, we are doing a whole bunch of additional programs. We're actually looking at adding some new, um, things to do at the golf course other than just golf, which is an interesting thought. Um, and so, increased revenue is definitely part of what we're looking at for running the, the golf course and having, and obviously, what we wanna do is have the revenues exceed what that, what that increase, um, is the six-point-five percent increase, uh, and then some, so. Additional questions? Okay. On the park side, uh, we have a six-point-nine percent increase for parks. Uh, this, uh, as was pointed out, we have a three-quarter-time park ranger position that, that's actually going away, and we're going to make that, um, turn that into a part-time B position, which is a non-benefited position. Um, and, just as a, as a, I said increase, I apologize. It's a six-point-nine percent decrease in parks. And, uh, one of the things that we're, we're looking at is what, what more can we do with part-time help? The three-quarter-time park ranger was one of those where it was like, well, could we hire a couple of part-time people and get more coverage, um, out of, out of that, what we're paying? So, there's that piece. Um, there is, again, back to the irrigation technicians. We're asking these folks that are holding these positions to be a little bit more knowledgeable and to do a little bit more. So, there's, there is that reclassification. And the cap- the capital projects will appear in the capital projects budget. So, that's why you're not seeing, uh, really too much in. projects budget. So, that's why you're not seeing really too much in, in capital outlay there. We do have some, some money that is needing to be spent, as you will all recall. Tina, do you recall what was in there, just the general capital stuff?
General capital, yeah. There's a Bobcat all-wheel-drive diesel with a sweeper front bucket. There are some blade attachments for some of their existing equipment, stump grinder, Toro Gator, a Toro or Gator utility vehicle, and then a box trailer for equipment operations.
So, miscellaneous parks equipment stuff. So. Yes, sir.
Andrew Fagan, I've got some questions. Every year that I've been on the council, we've talked about the turf conditions, the grass conditions, gopher holes, things like that. And looking at what's recommended in fiscal year 20, it looks like for supplies and services, oh, I'm sorry, that's, that's golf course. Excuse me, I'm wrong. Okay, so we're going up. We're just not even sure that, so maybe, maybe there, so there's some more. Okay. I was just going to say the, the, the conditions of the, of the parks and things like that are pretty important.
Yeah.
And maybe I should have said something on the, when we were talking about funding sources. But you look at our general fund and where we are, and we've been talking about funding sources, general fund, we've got like transportation projects, we've got parks, and we've got public safety, right, police and fire.
Yep.
And under Title 48, we could do a fire district group, we could do something also called a Parks Maintenance District under Title 48, which would take that general fund monies and, and cover it under that. Is that something that, how would we start that process as far as a, a Parks Maintenance District?
So, when we present the special assessment district conversation, then we'll make, we'll make sure that we're not just concentrating on fire. We'll be, we'll make sure that, that we're covering what we can do with parks, as well as what we can do with.
The only reason to, to just have that community conversation is if you were able to offset maybe parks and fire, we can push more of our general fund to transportation. Because when you look at all the unfunded capital projects that we have, transportation is the lion's share of it. It's, so, thank you.
Yep, yeah, no problem. Yeah, that, that will definitely be part of our conversation as we, as we address that. Okay. Economic development. So, economic development has almost a 10% increase. The department is going to add, as I, as I pointed out earlier, an economic development manager position. This new position will concentrate on commercial, the commercial part of economic development, recruitment and retention, and also our downtown as, as their responsibilities. We also have been talking about having our Main Street, or, I'm sorry, having our neighborhood services position that has been asked to take on some of the Main Street stuff. So, we're going to actually retitle that position and have that position become Grants Administrator. We feel like that we're, there's a number of grant opportunities that we need to focus on, and we're not getting the time that we need. So, with, with the transition to economic development manager, then we felt like we can concentrate more on having a Grants Administrator that can help in public works, can help in the police, can help with fire, with all the different grant opportunities that are out there. We need, we need someone who's watching for these, who understands how to do them. We've got that person in the organization already working on a number of grants, and so the, the transition seemed to match up with, with this plan pretty nicely. The Grants Administrator, we've, we've looked at, HR's looked at how that is reclassed and where we had our, our neighborhood services person. So, it, it matches up. So, there's no reclassification of the position. It's just a redo of their, of their job description. So, that's what we're, we're proposing on the, the personnel. And of course, in the ED department, that, I think, is going to make a huge service difference in what we're, what we're able to concentrate on for, for our economic development. That way, we will have the traded sector covered. We will have, now have the commercial sector and downtown covered as well. And, and also, as part of the DED, it's not listed up there, is we've also added money in there to pay for or to cover the cost of, what's the program cost, Gary? Or the local? Yeah, the local first position. That's a grant program where we have to come up with 21,000.
Grants will subsidize the other nine.
Yeah. So, it's a $30,000. We'll, they'll cover 9,000, we'll cover 21,000. So, there'll be a pretty good boost in the, the efforts of the downtown and, and in the general commercial as a whole. So, that's, that's kind of the ED budget. So.
That's the AmeriCorps Vista?
Yeah.
That's, they're going to be downtown. Is that a two-year commitment or just a?
It actually can ultimately, the way I understand the program is it can be a total of a three-year commitment. You may not be doing it with the same person for the, all three years.
Your intent is to have that AmeriCorps Vista downtown working?
Correct.
Every day?
Yep.
It's, okay, that's awesome.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's.
We will, we will, Councilman, we will be in support. We'll provide the office space, we'll provide the telephone, the computer, and, and they will work directly with Main Street. But I think we see ourself as a resource. And that is, you know, either myself or Josh can help point him or her in the right direction if they have questions. So, right now, that, that will also take place at the powerhouse. We've made provisions for that. So.
Perfect.
Yep.
I just, I know you and I have talked about this, but that, that figure you just gave, the 21,000, that is for other local first programs as well. It's not just for the Vista. Is that right?
That's correct.
It gives us a number of options. We, we went for the full bang. So, yeah.
Okay.
Good, good questions. Excuse me. Planning and zoning. Planning and zoning reflects a 9.7% increase. Their increase is, for the most part, a reclassification of a planner position. Probably that needed to happen a while ago, based on our analysis of, of that position. Of course, they've got a little bit of a capital outlay in that they have a need for, to change out a vehicle that is very, very old. Not as unsafe quite as HR's, but it's still in, in desperate need of change out. So, and they'll be sharing that cost with, with tourism. So, that's pretty much all I have for planning.
So, my bad that we didn't include in here, the supplies and services portion is up significantly, and that's for that, the zoning ordinance update.
Yep.
Of $90,000. That's the big increase on that.
Yeah, sorry.
I know, I didn't include that.
So, yeah, we will be doing, we're revamping. Thank you, Tina.
Yeah.
Of course, our code is in desperate need of, of update. As we've been working off of, what, 40-year-old code now, that 47-year-old code that we've just been bubblegumming and taping together to get through. So, yeah, thank you, Tina. I would have forgotten that. That's, that's the biggest piece.
In addition of a, an attorney in Carl's department, would that offset the cost of, of that? I mean, would, would they be working on that as well at all?
No, that's, that's really the work of a land use attorney. I mean, they will obviously look, look to the, the attorney's office to help. But this is really an outside company consultant helping us move this, make these changes.
Just want to say, we, we have a lot of dream team departments, I think. And just definitely planning, I'm thankful for, for planning. And Sylvia, and you guys are kind of bringing Kingman into the 21st century with looking at the zoning code, the update, the form-based code, sign code, all of these things that, you know, and examples like that could be cited in a lot of departments, fire and all sorts of places.
Agreed. Thank you. Yeah. And we, you know, it's, it blows people away when they find out that we have two planners.
Sure, yeah.
And, and that we do all the work we do with two planners. So, I'm, the, these folks have been amazing and, you know, wanting to be, you know, wanting to be forward-thinking instead of just saying, oh, yeah, we're going to continue to live with an old code and try to piecemeal our way through. Just makes, makes no sense. And kudos to them, because it is going to add some extra workload to what they're doing. But the results will be, we will find ourselves in the 21st century when it comes to planning, when we're done with it. So. All right. Tourism. Tourism is, reflects a very, has a very big increase, 30, almost 32%. And one of the things that we talked about earlier is that there was a request for a full-time employee. And so, the challenge that I gave to, to Gary and to Josh was to go back and that we would, that we would budget money, but we wanted to see that, that money be used for part-time employees. So that we could expand our coverage, be open, additional times that we could, that if we had an employee that was out sick or on vacation, that we didn't, you know, that we were still giving our, the, the guests that were showing up to the, to the tourist, to our tourism facility would, would get the help that they needed. So, the full-time employee isn't there, but there's multiple part-time employees now, anticipated. Supplies are on the increase, really in an effort to take care of our parking lot that is heavily used by big buses and a lot of traffic. And then the need to make sure that we're staying up with our merchandise and purchasing and getting the best prices possible. As far as capital, the, of course, the, there's the vehicle that we already talked about that will be shared between tourism and planning. But the, the two big items in here that are in capital is the Route 66 drive-through shield. I know we've talked about that a couple of times in prior, previous council meetings. And then conference room renovations are part of that capital project effort of trying to make sure that we have space that is, that we're actually, as a city, pretty desperate for as we, as we look for meetings, places to hold, even just, you know, internal meetings. If, once we get, you know, past 20 people, we, we start running into difficult choices and the, the places that we have to, to pick from start drying up. So, be, having additional meeting space would be extremely helpful, just internally, let alone just all the requests we get to have meetings in our spaces already. So, that is what we've got. So, the difference between the, the adopted for 19 and fiscal year 2020 is we go from 800,000 to just over 1.05 million. So, it's, it's a pretty, pretty, a pretty big jump for that department.
Josh had mentioned a program to help cover some costs for events. There was an application kind of like that. Is that in here?
Especially, the special events?
Yeah.
Yeah. The special events is not in, in there as, as it was described anyway. We're still working on that, what the permit process would be. I don't suspect that it's going to change the budget all that much. It's just going to make us more professional in how we handle special events. So, I don't, not anticipating a lot of expense. I, I'd like to say that I'm expecting a lot of revenue and expense, but I, I, I don't anticipate that being the, the program of having a special event process. Just, I, it'll just make us more professional.
There was a, an application that you could fill out to get money from the city to help pay for marketing or events?
That's, that's in there.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that, that program is, again, that, that's part of trying to revamp the program and making sure that we're professional and have rules and policies in place to distribute that. The money itself is, is in there. Just having a process in which, how it's given out, who's, who is given out to, needs to be worked out.
And then how much, what is the budget for tourism to market?
You have.
I have the marketing figure. So, got general advertising of close to $95,000.
$95,000.
And we've got tourism initiatives, which is that piece that you were asking earlier. And then another $5,000 for just general business promotions. But as far as what that makes up, I don't have the line item details, but those are the two areas that it would be included in.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I think when you're all said and done, your marketing, the marketing piece and special events promotion, you're, what, about $125, $130,000?
Ron, I have a, a question. Does, does that building bring in enough revenue to cover the cost of operating that building on a yearly basis?
No.
And what is, what's the, what's the difference?
So, it brings in, I think we've estimated $275,000 or so for next year.
And to heat and cool and all that stuff?
Yeah, all of that.
It doesn't cover the cost of that? See, I don't, I don't think that right now is the right time to do it, but I'd like to look at that. I mean, two-thirds of your building over there is this electric vehicle museum. It's been the same for like four or five years. You have to heat it, you have to cool it. It's not being advertised. It's not an efficient use of space. If you're going to have a museum in there, you need to advertise it so it starts to bring in more revenue. Or put it somewhere else. Because I just don't think that the space over there is efficiently used.
We, we totally agree with you, Vice Mayor. That, that's absolutely, that's, you're absolutely right. I mean, if, if we're going to have electric cars as, as an, as an attraction, then you should know that that, that's available, right? It shouldn't just be at the end of a tour that you were thinking you were on a Route 66, and then you walk through a door and it's, it's the electric car museum. And, oh, okay. So, I, I will tell you that Gary and his team have been working on a grant program, a private grant program, to develop an electric car museum. And we've had, the thing that's interesting about the electric cars is that we've, we have only the limited space that we have to show what, what we're displaying. But how many electric cars do we, do we actually have?
Twenty, almost 30 on the floor here, 65 in storage.
So, yeah, we, yeah, so it's.
I just think there's no reason for a city's official tourism building to run in the deficit every year. It should at least break even. I mean, it's the official visitor center, right? So, I mean, at least, at least make it break even.
Yeah. Well, and I, you know, I don't know how other tourism facilities, I honestly, to be honest with you, I, I don't know how other tourism businesses or departments are doing. I, part of it, part of that building is, like I said, you know, when we find space for the AmeriCorps position, you know, obviously, that's going to eat up space, and that's going to be ultimately a cost to have someone
Yeah.
in that space. But, yeah, I, I think at least we should know what the subsidy is on it. And, and I think there is a cost, some cost to tourism and the space. It's, it's a cool building. I mean, I know museums don't normally break even or even get closed. So, I mean, there's, there's big portions of the space that, you know, you're, you're doing to try to attract people and give them something to do. So, I mean, it's, that's a great question. And. to do. So, I mean, it's, that's a great question. And.
Did, did Lehigh, Utah where you used to work, did they have a visitor center and did?
They didn't. They had a museum.
Did they have one in Oregon?
Uh, we didn't.
Didn't have one.
Did not have it. So.
Thanks.
Yep.
I think the other thing to keep in mind is a lot of our work that we do is directing. So it's directing folks to the downtown or to that historic and a lot of question answering. So, you know, on the re, on the retail side, you know, we, that's where we've really been generating. And that's one thing I think that'll help with these additional part-time people, is we can really get, we can even jack those sales up quite a bit more by having that direct contact.
We have a kiosk at the visitor center too, right? Is there stuff in that kiosk at the visitor center that pushes people downtown?
So, all, so when you walk in, there is, every pamphlet that is in the, the kiosk is designed to get you doing something in the, in Kingman or in our region that would keep you, hopefully keep you here for a few days. So, a strong guy.
And just.
Yeah, exactly right. You know, and one of the things that, that, that we're talking, that we've been talking about is, you know, how, and I know that you've been involved in that conversation as well, Vice Mayor, where it's, how do we do, you know, is there some wayfinding that we can do to make it easier for people to transition from the powerhouse in, in, to the, to the downtown, to get them to, to either walk or drive and utilize the restaurants. And then once you're there, you know, heaven forbid you want to go to the turquoise store. You know, so like I said, I, I honestly don't know, I, I can't tell you if the tourist, if the powerhouse should break even. What I can tell you is the powerhouse should be able to make its way, but we should be able to justify whatever, whatever we're subsidizing it by being able to say that we pointed people to the downtown or we, we got people to stay overnight or.
Sure.
You know, so there's, so there's some pieces of that that may not be as easily quantifiable as just a, as a balance sheet.
Just in my head, I think for every, every dollar that we're over, it's like a marketing or advertising dollar that we're, a potential marketing or advertising dollar that we're putting towards that.
Right.
To cover the facility costs that we could be pumping out for advertising.
Right. Yeah. And again, I, I, I honestly don't know what other visitor centers are able to, to pull off or what their, what their break-even points are. Or if, you know, like I said, when you add museums to the mix, they, they, you know, unfortunately or fortunately, I think there's advantage to them, but they do, they do have a draw on your, your revenues as well.
Do you think performance measurements could maybe help with that?
I absolutely do. Something we're working on, so.
I, I also think that if you're successful getting a grant and can create an electric car museum, there's a great opportunity in that space to, to address any number of things that could be revenue generating or just utilizing space that is needed. Over the years, that space has been so many things.
Yep.
From auctions to chamber usage to so many, to economic development dinners. But now it is the electric car.
Yep.
But I don't, I don't think that people really know, just like you're saying, that when they go through that tour, that at the end you're going to end up, oh, it's an electric car museum. They just took it. So, with some people. And, and it is a delight in a, in a sense, but it is a hidden gem.
Yeah, no, I think it, I think Gary and his team recognize that it could be a huge draw. And like I said, our, our efforts to work on a, a funding source for an actual electric car museum have, have moved forward. And, and if, if we're able to get the partner that we've, we've been pitching this idea to, we could have an absolutely great museum that would give people another reason to visit Kingman and add to our tourism piece that I know people would be very interested in.
Their grant people, Mayor, were here and they've taken, we took the first step a couple of months ago. So they had the first layer that we started at as far as, you know, the two folks that came to visit us and, and review it all. So it's, it's, it's starting.
That sounds good.
Yeah. It's not cheap by any means, but it's starting, so.
Well, the fact, you know, the fact that we're not having to go out and buy electric cars to put in the museum puts us way ahead because that's usually the difficulty of starting a museum is, is that you have, you have the product to display. You know, you're not out there trying to, to purchase it. And so, I mean, having ninety-plus electric vehicles already in our possession is pretty amazing. So.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions on tourism?
Okay.
Airport, you're done?
Yeah, we could talk about it earlier.
Oh, we just talked about it earlier. Okay. Why do you think we already? All right, airport. We've got a bunch of projects. Yeah, we spent so much time on it, I thought we covered it. Sorry, I'm sorry. So the airport, it has a proposed budget that's up twenty-one, almost twenty-one percent. I, again, I will point out that last year's budget really wasn't based in anything factual. We had no idea of what past performance or what, what we should have in place. So, again, I, I don't know that I'm, ultimately that anybody should be alarmed about twenty-one percent increase. We really are just getting used to having it. And so one thing that we are clearly missing is we've got to reclassify the administrative secretary to administrative coordinator. That position is, is desperately needed at the airport and to, to help us be more professional and to be able to carry out some, I would say, more technical duties. And so very important position in, I think, our success moving forward. Of course, the, we've talked about this a couple of times, the draw site. The draw site is, is one of those things that continues to be something that we would love to see move forward faster, but we find ourselves caught between the, the feds and the state and other, other parties as well. But the draw site is anticipated to cost us over a million dollars. Of course, these will be paid several different ways. Outside contributions as the, as an order to pay them is, is issued. Environmental cleanup and paid with outside contribu, or I'm sorry. We want to do an additional environmental cleanup of sixteen acres. We think that will make that piece much more marketable to someone who wants a shovel-ready site. So, you know, in, as we talked about that with Gary and Bennett and Steve, it really made sense that the location of that sixteen acres is, is a really nice site. It just has some environmental issues. So we think it'd be money well-spent cleaning that up. Of course, we have, we've got to get the environmental assessment done for the fourteen-hundred acres that we're looking to get released as well. That's pretty important. As far as capital outlay, we had a major capital outlay last year that is returning, it's, it's returning its value in spades as we're able to mow more frequently, quicker. And it, our, our personnel aren't sitting there wasting time on fixing mowers and tractors. They're out, they get the, they're getting stuff mowed. It looks great. And then they're able to move on to other projects, much-needed projects that get us more clean, more cleaning and maintenance done on our, on our facilities. So this year we're looking to add a minivan for tours and we're looking for a backhoe and a dump truck. These are things that we've been borrowing that, you know, we're not as efficient and effective as we should be when we're waiting to get these pieces of equipment from Public Works or from parks. And so there's enough work out, out there to justify that. And then, I know I mentioned this a little bit earlier, but their demolition of, of a building. If you remember on the tour that Gary and Bennett gave us, they pointed out that building. I think that getting rid of that building will definitely help us market another piece or perhaps even encourage a company to want to expand and grab that piece if, if it was cleaned up. So the airport, again, like I said, airport has a pretty big change in the budget, but at the end of the day, it's, it's replacing a budget that we really didn't know what was going to look like. So I, I, I'm, we're feeling pretty good about this, having one year under our belt. And I've, like, I think the, the proof's in the pudding of what you're seeing as far as moving property, marketing property, having an airport that is clean and attractive. And, and I think we're putting the money in the right spots. So, questions about?
What, the recent sale of property, the three hundred plus thousand, is that counted in, into this budget? Or that's just going to come in later in the, in the year and we might end up being ahead?
So we didn't include that in the budget. We didn't know at that time. And we wouldn't include land sale proceeds, not knowing. However, when we talked about what it would be spent on, it's on a project that is actually included in the capital budget. So it would, if we didn't get it completely grant-funded, we would be able to utilize those monies towards that project.
Okay.
Yep.
Just a point of clarification. Is it fourteen hundred acres or eighteen hundred acres? Because I've heard conflicting numbers.
Oh, have I?
So have I, but.
It gets eighteen.
It's, so we got the number wrong.
Yeah, I think it's eighteen.
On the capital project, it says that.
Just if it goes out for public consumption.
Yeah, good point. Yeah, it is eighteen, as I recall. When I said fourteen, I'm like, but yeah, it's, it's eighteen. So we'll get that fixed. Appreciate that.
Yep.
Ron, we also, we, we may be able to forget about the dump truck. Public Works was able to, to facilitate us there. We don't need a vehicle that, you know, is highway-ready and all that sort of stuff. We really just need it around. So they got one out there and so it's, but it's already made a difference. So now we'll work on the backhoe issue. But those are things that we can do for ourselves that free up Rob's operation to take care of the other things in the town. So.
Right.
And since we have, we had the staff. And now that, that mowing time was, became critical is that we now can mow, mow four times the amount of grass in one day that we did before. So that allows to free up to take care of those other issues that we need to clean up around the park, which is continuous. So.
Yep. Good. Yeah, I, I think not spending time working on a mower that has, is not working, time could be spent somewhere else for sure. All right. Well, I know this is going to break your heart, but.
Do we do police? If I forget, police too? They're after airport.
Yeah, well, well.
All right. So let's go in the books for police then, right?
Do you want to just pick them up tomorrow?
Do. Well, I know Jennifer's not going to be here tomorrow.
Okay, okay, okay. Great. I, I just thought they were for tomorrow. So apologize. So, yeah, let's go to, let's go to our books. Police, page one oh one through one oh three. So in our police budget, we're seeing almost a twenty-one percent increase in police budget. And we are seeing that increase really in more of the, again, back to the increase that we're proposing for the dedication of money to the police or the public safety retirement system, that one point five million. So, and then with the ongoing number of vacant police officer positions, the police department, of course, recognized that in holding positions, that it, it didn't really make sense to hold positions if they weren't filled. And as I stated in our, it was stated at the last meeting, we're using, the police department was using two of those positions to help fix compression in this year. We've, so those, that compression fix has already been made in fiscal year 2019. And then, of course, we have, one of the things that we've, we budgeted for and we did, we put it out for bid and received bids was a remodel of their, of their front greeting area to have that with bulletproof glass as part of the reception as far as our folks that are helping people and protecting them. And so that project, because the lead time was so long, actually will be carried over until this next fiscal year. Matter of fact, I, I think the, the bulletproof glass order would require something like sixty to ninety days. Is that ten week? Yeah. So it's even longer than that. So, so that project actually won't really, I mean, it's technically moving now because the materials are ordered, but the actual construction stuff will happen in our new fiscal year. We are, we are spending some money and doing some marketing, some new marketing. Chief, you want to talk about your, your efforts to market to the people to try to get more recruits and, and what you guys are doing there?
Absolutely. We, we created a recruiting team last year that's really been very successful for us. And we're, we're going to go above and beyond. In first, first of June, June fourth, actually, we're going to be holding a press conference announcing a partnership with New Zealand in regards to reaching out to the new generation of police officers. That was one of the most up-to-date and modern recruitment efforts that we saw. And through Colleen's reach, they've been gracious enough to agree to partner with us. So I believe we're going to be the first probably to ever have an international partnership to attract new generation officers.
Yeah. We're really excited about it. We've had a graphic artist working on some recruitment posters and pamphlets that is just, it, it's looking great. I, I don't think the work's quite done on that. We, we, we are going to do kind of a, a PR piece on rolling out the new program here in the first part of June, as I recall.
June fourth.
Yeah. And so just, just wanted to let the council know that we're, we're actively engaged in that and trying to identify those next officers. The, the other piece, and I know we covered it at our last meeting, but I think it's worth saying again, is that dealing with this compression, the compression situation in the police department will allow us to do a better, I think, a more thorough job or a better job of recruiting police officers from other agencies that are already seasoned officers. So I think, I think we're headed in the right direction. Again, one of the things I think we'll benefit from, especially with our public safety departments, is the development and tracking of performance measurements so that we, we know where our personnel, you know, how many personnel we should have compared to other benchmarked communities, that we know the services we're providing makes sense. And we, we're reporting on what those are. We've, our police department, of course, scored, I would say, scored very well in our citizen survey, but we want to make sure that we're not slipping on, slipping down on that. And of course, we want, there was a piece in the police departments where the, the, that they felt like crime, crime rate needed to be better controlled. So I'm not exactly sure. You know, obviously you don't, you don't drive down or it's impossible to drive down crime rate, even if you had a police officer on every single corner. That, you're not going to accomplish, that is, is easily as we, as we would like to. But performance measurements seem to be pointing, will I think help us, point us out as where, where we're deficient or where we can better use resources in the department. So. And then the only thing else that I wanted to point out is that this, we know that, that as far as there's technology allocation, I know I mentioned this already, in that, that we want to make sure that, that we're not being inefficient and ineffective out on the side of the road when we're dealing with like a traffic stop. And having an officer be able to generate a ticket electronically instead of having to write one out, kind of thing, makes a lot of sense. So the chief and his team are looking at what we can do with these citations. And so there'll be some. and so, um, there'll be some, some costs there. Um, and then, of course, just as we, as we go through the, uh, Kalia accreditation, uh, there's gonna be additional cost there as well as the caper software, and, um, I think that is it for the police department.
I just wanted to make one clarification on the police department's, uh, remodel, their security upgrade. That's actually being, most of it is being funded out of our capital projects fund, which we'll talk about tomorrow. There's just a small piece
Good point.
that they're actually, um, funding out of this. The largest increase in that capital outlay is most significant.
Yeah, totally, yeah, that's right. It was, it was budgeted in our capital projects for this year as well, so...
And Ron, could I just, when we're referencing the e-ticket and the cost of that, but there's the, the savings, a benefit for that as well, because when they create an electronic ticket, that gets sent to the court. The court doesn't have to manually enter that information, one where you're gonna look at errors, but that's a significant time saving in creating their documents. Same thing when it comes to my office. Otherwise, you've got, right now, it's, it's three different times people are entering things into the, into their separate computer systems, which do create errors, but it's a ti, it's a huge time sink. One of the biggest or, one of the, the, the most amount of time that my staff takes is opening citations and, and having that process start up will really sub, substantially save that, because right now, I actually do need another legal assistant in my office. I didn't ask for one because we're, obviously, we've got a lot of things going on, we're trying to add these things, but that program may decrease that need, and that's my hope, is maybe that'll free us up without having another person. We'll find out after it's taken place, but I just wanted to toss that in there.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point.
It's a savings as well.
Yep. Yeah, and the court, the court was really excited about it, because then they didn't have to read handwriting that may be difficult to read, so...
We just get the judge.
Yeah, well...
Manager Fogg, I mean, I just, um, tell Chief DeVries that I'm very thankful to see the Kalia accreditation, um, as a part of your budget. Thank you for that.
It's, it's actually ALE, we're not doing Kalia. Um, the state adopted their own. It's the accreditation program that we provided the oversight for you, uh...
Yes.
I wanna say the beginning
Good point.
of the year, but, um, right now, we are on target to achieve certification, uh, possibly as early as September this year. We were, we were shooting for January, but, uh, Deputy Chief Coonert and all of the, uh, command staff and supervisors have really, uh, adopted this and moved forward
A great, great team.
at lightning speed.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chief.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Chief, um, with the loss of the Junior Police Academy, had a couple of boys that went through that, did you ever see any kids that went through and, when they grew up, became police officers that went through that program?
We thought we had one that was in the academy this past, but, uh, unfortunately, he didn't make it all the way through, but we do have some that are currently in the military, um, that have hopes of coming back and becoming Kingman officers, so... And we also have one that's an administrative secretary for us right now, uh, until she can achieve
I know, I know that gal.
Until she can reach the age of going to the academy, so we're working with her as well.
And I'm confident she will, she will fall through. Also, do you have, like, you know how the military recruitments go to the high schools and they do, does, can we, do you do something like that to the juniors and seniors?
Yes, we've been going to the recruiting fairs, we've been going to any, any event that we can to reach out. As a matter of fact, you'll see our recruiting booth at the city expo on the thirtieth of this month.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and our materials, the materials that we're, the, the recruiting materials that Colleen and, and the chief's team have been working on with the graphic artists are really geared towards, uh, the younger, the younger group, whether it's, whether it's somebody who's always dreamed about being a police officer, or they, you know, a, a junior, of, even a freshman, you know, the, I think the material's really gonna speak to them. It's, it's really cool, so...
Yeah, Rusty Cooper worked out pretty well for us, so...
Yeah.
Get some more of that.
Yeah. So, that's, uh, that's what we have so far today. We're, uh, we're five minutes early from our completion date, or completion time for today, and we'll pick it back up tomorrow at nine o'clock.
Thank you, Manager Fogg.
Thank you.
I now adjourn the meeting.